All this meeting to order on Monday, November twenty-fourth at seven eleven P M. Sam, provide the.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Taylor would you give the opening prayer?
Dear Lord, look over the city on this Thanksgiving week. Ensure that everybody is is safe and healthy during their travels and their visits with family and friends. Look over council this evening and the decisions that need to be made for the city. Look over our citizens in attendance this evening and make sure that everybody has a safe drive home. In the name we pray.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Lawson, Mr. Beck.
Here.
Mr. Taylor.
Here. Here.
Mr. Saul, here.
Here. Here. Motion to excuse Mr. Lawson.
Second.
Sorry.
Yes.
Mr. Command?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Joseph Saul, yes. Mr. Powell?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, did everyone receive the minutes from the regular meeting on November tenth? Any additions or corrections?
November tenth, um, there was at the beginning of the meeting, where there was a motion to amend the agenda. The person who seconded the motion would appear to be recorded incorrectly was not a person who's in council.
Yes, I I got that and you got I got that, yes, thank you. That is the only thing.
All right. Motion to accept the minutes from the November tenth meetings.
Salute.
Mr. Command?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Joseph Saul, yes. Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Flowers?
Yes. Yes.
And then we have the minutes from the special meeting on November seventeenth. Are there any additions or corrections? I would like to note that when we went into executive session, all members voted yes, Mr. Flowers voted no, and then I believe you left after that and did not go into the executive session. Is that correct, Mr. Flowers?
You told me.
Yes. You left that the right the special meeting you left after the vote to go into executive session.
Was I in executive session?
No.
No. I left.
Okay, correct. So when we returned from executive session, it says all council members voted yea. But I would like to know that Mr. Flowers had left. And then we took ordinance eighty-one twenty-five off the table and voted on it. It says all council members voted yea. But I would like to note that Mr. Flowers was not here for that vote.
For the sake of consistency, that might also need to be changed when we learn. Okay, that's not a problem.
Any other additions or corrections? I'll make a motion. Oh, you go ahead. I'll make a motion to accept the minutes from the special meeting on the seventeenth of November.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Joseph Saul, yes. Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Flowers?
Yes.
Mr. Beck?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, auditor treasurer's report. Mr. Mullane, you want to go first? Treasurer's report.
Yes, I will do. Good evening, everybody. I'll bear with the treasurer's report for October twenty-five. With that, turn over the first page. You'll see total funds of the month end is seven million nine hundred ten thousand nine hundred fifty dollars and sixty-one cents. Below that, I have running interest rate totals. So far, month month to date was twenty-one thousand one eighty-nine fifty-six. And year-to-date interest now crossed over the two-hundred-thousand mark at two-hundred-two thousand one nineteen sixty-five. It is kind of trending downward, but it it's good for the moment. Turn over to the next page, just more of a detail. The total record of investments we have, four million one hundred forty-five thousand four seventy-four seventy. And while I'm on this page, the only thing to note is January fifteenth, or the sixteenth, believe the upcoming renewal period for the C D that we have. So depending on events for that, I'll see about getting bid letters out. Probably get them by the end of next month probably before I'm out and then.
What do you mean bid letters? Do you send them out to each bank to see what they'll give, what rate they'll give you?
Right, so those would need to be sent either. I can do them at the end of next month. We have the new incumbent coming in to kind of show them how to get those out and then it'll actually be January when the transition will happen. So whoever's treasurer in January would be the one to set up, I believe, an investment meeting or similar, whatever, depending on what we have and then go forward. Just want to alert people of that upcoming event. And then on the next page, next two pages are the bank and book reconciliation of which, once again, October, I will fully balance with no difference. And that is what I have.
I have a question. On the, you know, the interest rates are probably definitely going to come back down to
Right.
Two percent or something like that, two or three percent.
They'll be, so the good news is that the C D stays locked in for the for the time, so it's remained
Right.
The last rate, but yeah, the the variable rate.
Fifteen.
Right.
Yeah.
They're going to drop and on that second page, you'll see like the people's bank are are listed. That's an account that actually is variable rate. It's actually trended down maybe four.
Oh, that wasn't a locked-in rate?
No, it probably dropped like twenty-four percentage points or something.
Yeah, yeah.
Over the last few months. So there will be some downturn. I don't know future forecasts. It could trend slightly lower, I imagine.
Yeah, because that said it's three point eight percent.
Right, that that's for the for the C D that was locked in.
Right, right, but in January, that thing could probably drop a little too.
Right, and we now change their agreement. They use intra-five, which is a collection of banks where, so we don't go over the two-hundred-fifty-thousand-dollar limit per account that's in state insurance. Unfortunately, when you have a collective, that generally means the rate's going to be a little lower.
Yeah.
Maybe a ten or twenty percent.
Thank you.
Yeah, no worries.
Any other questions?
I asked something I always wondered. Why, what's what's the C D two that you just say? There's not, there's no information.
We used to have, it's just a filler field. Yeah, we had two CDs before.
All right. No.
Thank you, Mr. Long. I'll make a motion to accept the treasurer's report for October. Second.
Mr. Joseph Saul, yes. Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Flowers?
Yes.
Mr. Beck?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Nick Smith, if you'd like to give the auders' report.
Sure thing. Good evening, council, friends and neighbors. In the month of October, the city's expenses outpaced revenues. Revenues were at one point five million. Expenses were at one point six million. The exact number is one point, one million five hundred twenty-five thousand five hundred fifteen dollars in expenses and one million six hundred fifteen thousand dollars, three hundred fifty dollars in expenses. The total combined funds sits at six point eight million. The general fund is at eight hundred eighty-four thousand. This is the sole fund that would not meet our healthy threshold. Combined street funds sat at five hundred forty-three thousand, capital improvement at two hundred seventy-nine thousand, the water fund at one million six hundred fifty thousand, sewer fund at one million and fifteen thousand. This report, as well as expense, revenue, and cash reports are all available on the city's website. I do have a few copies here if anybody would like to take a copy home with them. Credit card report, had just a handful of credit card payments in the month of October. We had some training for firefighters. We paid for lodging at the Quality Inn. We purchased a chainsaw carburetor from Sazza's website. At Dana's Tire Center, we got a rim for the portable generator. The tire needed a new rim. The fire department needed new dryer parts, so that's the reliable parts expense there. From Tractor Supply, we got a new welder for the utility department and Santa suit express. We got a new Santa suit for the fire department. Important stuff. I haven't seen it yet, so I got to check it out. Other items, Tara Cade, she's been just a tremendous city employee for the past four years and she's gotten a great new opportunity, still in local government. And so she's moving on. We hired Ashley Starbury to replace her. We had a really robust process. We had about seventy applications. We narrowed it down to the top ten and then picked the, then we had an interview team pick three to interview. We interviewed those three and made an offer after background checks and references and so forth. Ashley has government experience, including utilities billing, and she's going to be a great addition to the team and we're going to actually start training her tomorrow. I also met with Ms. Thompson Hashman to just talk about training, transition, all the details that relate to the role of city auditor. So that way, in the event that the city assumes a statutory form, she can be as prepared as possible. I'm willing to provide the exact same service and assistance to a prospective auditor that the charter counsel and city manager appoint, should they appoint that person. So I'm happy to do that for both people and eager to. And with that, that's been my auditor's report. Any questions from council?
The Quality Inn. Seven hundred and twenty bucks.
I think that was a couple nights or multiple firefighters.
Was that all the firefighters we have up there?
No, I think it was two or three firefighters and a couple rooms over a couple nights. But I can follow up with the fire chief to figure out, you know, what the process was.
I guess what my question is, Nick, is that is that just for rooms or do they get their food on that? Do they get incidentals? Do they, can they?
This was just for rooms. Yeah, this was just for lodging, for sure, yeah. I don't, I don't know off the top of my head whether this, I don't think that the city has expenses for their food. I've never seen that, so I don't think that's happening.
I didn't know that was.
But I can double check, but I'm not aware of us providing anything beyond lodging.
Right.
Yeah. Yeah.
And that was in West Virginia?
Yes, I think it was a, I think it was a water rescue thing. I
I think you're right, because I.
That's what, that's what I think it was.
I remember Harry saying something.
Yeah, I remember.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Smith. Motion to accept the auders' report for October. Second.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Flowers?
Yes.
Mr. Beck?
Yes.
Mr. Command?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Joseph Saul?
Yes.
Citizens comments. I ask that you keep your comments to three minutes and we state your name.
See you. Thank you.
Joining me are you, West Washington Street. My are just wonderful comments again. During the paving of West Washington Street and East Washington, I got to meet some of the people that are doing that work. They stand there for eleven hours a day doing this stuff. It was really amazing. And restaurant facilities, you know, they don't have a quarter party with them, but I'm happy to say our businesses took good care of them. That's important. The other one is really exciting. Charlotte and I got very excited about when Mr. Cox was talking about the new playground and everything and the six swing sets and having one of those swing sets be a special swing set where they had somebody, not a child, that faced the child and so they could swing together. And I happened to be in the city building and a person was explaining the thing, how very, very important that is because she knows one of her relatives has an autistic child and they can't swing the regular swing set with that, you know, nothing in front of them. And this allows that child to experience the swinging thing. So one of the six swings will be that swing and it's all paid for by Charlotte and I, because I was so excited about it.
It's all paid for by who?
Charlotte and I, the swing.
But you bought the swing?
We are, yes. We feel that strongly about it. So.
How about the full sash?
They don't feel that strongly.
Hey, it never hurts to ask, Joe.
The other was already included in the thing. This was the swing sets are not cheap. It's almost fourteen hundred dollars for one little swing. But you know what? What a job we can give to this child, any child. That's all I have and that made me really happy and I'm very proud of it. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Any other citizens' comments?
Good evening. I'm Jane Forrest Redfern. I'm the director of the Athens-Hocking Solid Waste District. And I want to thank you for all of your support for the recycling day that we had a couple months ago. We got a really good turnout from folks from Nelsonville and the whole area, really. Build up a whole tire trailer, garbage truck, lots of scrap metal and lots of items for reuse. As many of you may have read in the paper, the solid waste district will be adopting the sort, or what some of you may know as the Athens-Hocking Recycling Center. We feel that it will provide ways to become more efficient and effective. And so that means we'll also be taking over the contracts for the city of Nelsonville and we'll still be using the same people and everything. It'll just be under the solid waste district. At the past two utility company or committee meetings, you know what, it's the utility club. We discussed and I suggested that under the revised code that city of Nelsonville or any government could contract with another government, which the solid waste district is, for solid waste recycling. And I know that you're considering a bid out tonight, but cooperative agreement is possible. It's it's very negotiable and we can roll up our sleeves and figure out things like picking up the recycling center, recycling at the senior center. Athens-Hocking's done a great job over the last few years. And we want to continue in that and I just want to thank all of you for your support of recycling because it's my responsibility, but also it's the best thing to do for the environment with it. So I think Krista wants to say a few words.
I was just going to hand out the, you know, the Ohio revised code that gives you legal authority to do the cooperative agreements. I guess the only thing I would add in addition to that is one of the nice things of cooperative agreement are that you can make changes that benefit either party as the contracts go along. And one thing that I've been really interested in doing in Nelsonville is helping more with cleanup. So we got an opportunity earlier this year where there was a household that had had people illegally dumping, dumping in the yard. It was an abandoned, it wasn't an abandoned property, but nobody was living in it. And Jane helped out with some of the financials around that, but we sent staff in our American Corps to help the property owner fill out a dumpster, fill a dumpster of everything that had been up there and take it. And so looking at more opportunities like that and then, you know, partnering with Jane to do the collection event for both waste and then recyclable, this is very exciting too. And together we've done a lot more of that, of that kind of stuff with the staff. So we're really interested in just sort of expanding how much we can do in terms of both trash cleanups, but also getting more people recycling.
Was that on your dime? Was that on?
No, it was mine. I I raised it. I had, I got a very, very large grant to do cleanups throughout that district and it's
You still have it?
Yeah.
Can you still do cleaning?
Yes, I mean, it tends to.
The last swing's there?
Sure. I just want to say, I understand that you want to go out to bid and give everybody an opportunity, but we just want you all to know that there are options and that sometimes projecting three years in advance can be very, can be disloyal to us and we are the only organization that picks up curbside except for wrong people when they have a contract. So we want to support recycling and we think that they would consider that, but we will be bidding. But just wanted to let you know there are other options as well. And whether or not any of that happens, whatever happens at the end of the year, the district is always going to support Nelsonville and be supportive of the people here and so that we can make it more beautiful and address any issues in that regard. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Any other citizens' comments?
John Meeks, Walnut Street. You guys probably won't know the answer to this, but I'm going to ask it. My big Jason Cohen question. We can all agree Canal Street's pretty nice now. West Washington Street's around about as pretty nice. Canal Street to six ninety-one is pretty nice. Drive through town every day, running around, going to and from work. I can't be the only one to notice that just bringing paint jobs pilling up already.
Yep.
Do do we have any type of warranty on this? Because I know the state's paying for it with a grant. But in a year, year and a half, the city's going to probably repaint that and that's a large fee for the city to have to do that. So, you know, is this something that council and Mr. Cohen need to address now? Or is there something in the contract that protects the city to not shell out thousands of dollars in a year or two to have to repaint it? Because there's sections of it now, drive down Canal Street.
Yep.
It looks like it was painted years ago. It's it's pilling up. It's gone. So that's just a concern I have as a citizen driving through town every day. I think the city needs to protect themselves. If there's something in the contract, if not, I don't know what can be done.
Channel or open canal. I noticed it the other day.
A lot of your crossbars are gone.
Yeah. They're still marking it out there, right?
Yeah, they're still, they're still painting today, but like literally when they're painting one half, the other half might have been painted a week or two ago and it's pretty much almost gone. It's like it was painted four or five years ago.
I can address that somewhat with what I know. That is a hoodup project.
I agree.
Okay, and I believe Mr. Holmes could probably address. I I see him raising his hand.
But I'm sure the city has something to do with that.
First line of my city major report, so that's why I did the topic briefly, coming back to the place that is already worn off.
So we'll.
I don't want to see the city in two years paying to shell out thousands of dollars to repaint something that should have lasted four or five years.
Without question.
Especially if you remember all the traffic that happened on that. That's all I got. So I'm working so bad.
I got just a quick one. Are these the only two ordinance that we'll act on tonight? I'm sorry, are these the only two ordinance that we'll act on tonight here on the? No, we have ordinances for first reading also. We get a copy of those?
You can't be agenda. I just got them.
Oh, no, I'm not blaming you. I'm just saying. Okay, all right, so we're going to address that here in a moment. I just like to know what they were. Okay. Any other citizens' comments?
This is not bad news.
Oh, okay.
If I may, I'd like to pass something out real quick.
Sure Heather on that side and I am on this side.
My name is Terry Robb. I know some of you in here. If you don't know me, I I taught at Nelson York for several years and as an administrator in Nelson York. Several years I've been retired since two thousand fourteen. But I just have a little bit of, I think, good news. It's basically involved the band, Nelson York Band in high school and athletics and Nelsonville City. But basically, not pulling my own ball, but I was accepted or asked to march in the Terminal Roses Parade in Pasadena. That that's one part of it. There's a bigger part, yeah, but and I think Mary Jane McKinley and Kane McCoy would be proud of that. But there's going to be over three hundred, three fifty band directors from across the country marching and I'll be marching and playing. It's it's an organization called Saluting America's Band Directors. Okay, and then they say like, there'll be like eight hundred thousand people in that Pasadena watching about forty-five million across the country. You know all about the Rose Bowl Parade. But a couple of things. It's basically started, there's a guy named Mike Sewell. He passed away in two thousand seventeen. He's a friend of mine anyhow, but he he was a band director. He started out of Cooksville and he went to Pickerton. It was a Pickerton he passed away. But so they started this organization called the Marching Band, the Band Directors Marching Band. And then through that, we do the organization Saluting America's Band Directors. Well, there's two things I want to mention about that. When we go to Pasadena, they wanted us all to bring an emblem or a patch or a sticker from the organization that we're from. So I do, because they're going to give it to the Rose Bowl president and making the thing. So I did, I did create a a sticker. I was going to have a patch made, but I got stickers and I got them for a lot of kids in school. That talks about the Nelson York Band, so this will be on the Rose Bowl there. But the important thing is they, with this band, the organization, we have a float. And the topic of the float is banding together. And it talks about how the bands work with all different organizations, athletics, council, city and all that. And on this float are some musicians and and then there's a football player playing the trumpet. Well, they had an auction across the country, across the country and Mexico, there's people from Mexico, too, that to get the winner of the auction, the highest bid, got to have their school colors on the school name put on the, on the, on the float. So I kept bidding, 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 and I ended up winning the bid. So they sent me the next day, they sent me a picture. This is not the exact thing, but I gave them the information about the brown, white and orange. And it was going to be, you can see the picture in there. We have a football player. It's going to have N Y on the front of it. And on the back, it'll say Buckeyes and we have a football number seventy-five. So in the Rose Bowl, when you see the float there on January first, we're going to see, they probably don't know it's Nelsonville. They they got in the press, they said Nelson York, but it'll say N Y and then you'll see Nelsonville represented.
That's great, that's great, yes.
I'm going to play a malcolm, a marching French horn. I play a lot at W U and I play trumpet also, and you always say playing the trumpet. But I'm going to be playing the marching malcolm, the marching French horn. So it's going to be probably three hundred and fifty directors from across the country. And so if you look for us, it's called Saluting America's Band Directors.
Miss McKinley would be very proud.
Oh, yes.
Very proud.
I, as a recent transplant, Nelsonville.
I, um, as a recent, um, transplant in Nelsonville, um, could you tell me what the significance of number seventy-five is?
I, I got to pick a, uh, I got to pick, they asked for, they wanted, you know, a uniform. I picked number seventy-five. It's for Will Oldenbaum.
Okay.
You know, Will. I, I just knew him brewing up as well.
I'm here in Nelsonville.
His football jersey, number seventy-five. So I was walking through there and I know Will, Nelsonville kid, and, um, so I had to, I had to pick the number and play seventy-five.
I play the spoon.
Did you play spoon? I'll pass this round if you want to see.
Your theme song should be Spoon Man by Soundbar.
I would play one.
Thank you very much.
Are there any other assistance comments?
Hello.
Hello.
Who are you?
What's he doing? There he is. There's the chief right there. As rumors go. Um, I would just like to say something, uh, that you probably not expecting. Um, you know, over the past six years, um, Nelsonville's went through a lot of changes. And somewhere along the line, it became personal with everybody. It became personal. And along the line, I forgot what I was taught as a child. What that was, was if you don't have anything nice to say, don't say anything at all. Okay? And there's a few people that I have gotten down in the mud with and, you know, I was told a long time ago, you don't get in the mud with pigs. Cause you know what happens? The pig likes it and you get dirty. And, you know, Joe and Sue, I'm sorry, I've mentioned your name. On viewpoint, Mr. Flowers, thank you.
Thank you.
But, um, I've lost family members over this. It has not been a good experience. You know, it is not a good thing. You know, getting down and getting nasty and making it personal. There's been letters sent to my wife. There has been letters sent to my mother-in-law. There's been letters sent to me anonymously, of course, alleging all kinds of things that I just found out recently. Really great stuff. Um, there's been people called, people have called people's employers trying to get them fired. It has to stop. It has, Nelsonville has to heal. And as a person that's been on the opposite side of this, taking the abuse and taking the abuse and having the false, the fake Facebook webpages made up and taking pictures of properties at certain angles and all this stuff, it has to stop, guys. It really does. It's ripping this town apart. It really is. You know, these people up here, they're this, they're different people than what were here six months ago, eight months ago, and they're all bad still. You gotta think about it, you know? You got a communist, a socialist, and what's the other one?
A felon.
A felon.
I'll say
That's what we have here. Why? What have these people done? Besides try and do things. By the way, I want to ask you, why are you guys doing this? Do you like being beat on? Is that what it is?
Definitely love the game.
Okay. I'm just asking rhetorically. But we have to come together and Mr. Clement, I'm glad to see you're sitting in your seat after the threat that was made earlier this week. Guys, you've been well behaved. Everybody here's great. You're listening to everybody. You're having conversation. Nobody is yelling at each other. Nobody's pointing fingers. Let's do that. You know, I'm the first one. If I'm going down the street and you need a yard mode, you got an overgrown yard, Bob. Who mows it? Me. In a heartbeat. Well, I wouldn't mow yours, but you always got politics signs on. Anyway. It is time for us to put this aside and move forward, whether it's with statutory form or whether it's with, with the charter form. Here's a few things that I've found out recently and you can search this, cause I tell the truth. I don't lie. Insurance rates are going to more than double. As Sue, and Sue can tell you, that's gonna kill us. Insurance rate doubling is not gonna be good. It's gonna more than double. About two and a half times is what the projected increase is. Okay? Rita, our income tax people are very concerned about what are we going to do? Guys, income tax is our income, the majority of it. You know, there's a lot of things going forward. You know, if there was a written out plan, not just referring to some a high revised code, an actual plan that's written out, it wouldn't be a problem. But there isn't one. So I know everybody's got their opinions and I'm, 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 I'm one of them. I'm guilty as most. And I have said a lot of bad things and have made a lot of bad judgments. But at the end of the day, gotta work together and everybody here is doing it tonight. Everybody's doing it tonight. And rumors are vicious, just like I've heard about Chief, Chief Meeks back there. It's all around town. And he's happy where he's at. He'd be crazy to want to come back in this environment. But guys, I just want you to think about one thing. Think about what's missing tonight. Think about what we need to do to go move forward. You know, that, guys, we have a great evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask you to clarify something real quick before you move on?
Yes.
When you say that insurance rates will double, do you mean?
The insurance premiums that we pay as a city will double.
Under the transition of statutory?
Regardless of risk assessment.
Okay. Thank you.
Are there any other assistance comments?
Thank you, Susan, for your years of hard work.
Yeah. Okay. Any business and organi- organizational comments? Many discussions. Did any committees meet since?
I was gonna, sorry, I was just waiting, cause before, I'm not, I don't live in Nelsonville, so one other time I wasn't really able to talk to you much. But I, I just have a question. I'm, I'm making work. I live right outside Nelsonville. But I have a question about, um, the ordinance to allow the tiny houses. Um, and I'm wondering if you, if there are any restrictions on the, on this ordinance. Now, I haven't seen ordinance ever since I, I know that it's out there. The reason I'm asking is because if you go down through the plains and you look going toward Athens and you look to your right, you'll see a lot of tiny houses that are put together, currently being rented, um, making someone a whole lot of money. I don't have any problem with that, but I think the plains then had to finally put something, um, to stop it because as we all know, sometimes people will take advantage of something that's meant to be good. And so I just want to make sure that that doesn't happen here, that we don't get a lot of, uh, storage buildings turned into dwellings. So the question is, are there restrictions?
So we're gonna add the ordinance, uh, eighty twenty-five onto the agenda for a second reading, which is tiny homes. So we will be having discussion on that.
Okay. So I am concerned because today I drove down Franklin and as I was coming down Franklin, I noticed a little storage shed and somebody's living in it. That would be considered a tiny home right now. Um, so I'm concerned about that because we do have some empty lots around town and it would be very easy for someone to come in and buy a lot and put two or three little houses on it, just like happened in the plains. So, um, anyway, that's it.
Alright, thank you.
Uh-huh. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, committee discussions. Have any committees met since November tenth?
I believe that, uh, the utility committee just met today. Um, the judiciary committee, um, Parks and Rec. Parks and Rec.
Okay. Well, can we get one committee update? Let's just, Mr. Flowers, would you like to start with the utility committee? Your committee's met twice since November tenth.
Right.
Give us an update on that.
Oh, well, we just met tonight, so that'd be a pretty good update on the trash contracts and bids. Uh, and I think, um, on the tenth, wasn't it that we met?
You met twice, uh, the tenth.
Uh, we met, uh, on the seventeenth and I think that was about bids, wasn't it?
I think it was about more of this name, I believe. I was on it that day, but I was off track.
Yeah, I think it was. I think this is all about the bids, uh, the trash bids. Is that right?
That's okay, sir.
Yeah. Yeah, we're talking about, uh, uh, putting the bids out as Jane and Chris have, uh, spoke earlier about. So, uh, tonight we met again to do that. We're gonna pass it on to council and let council kick it around and see what, uh, Mr. Holmes has a plan. That we're gonna advertise it in the paper, uh, December the first and December the eighth. And, uh, accepting bids up until the twenty-ninth of December where we'll make a final, uh, I guess a final decision on who we're gonna haul our trash. That's about it.
So the planning and development committee met. Uh, we discussed the ban on data centers that would be potentially coming to Nelsonville. We voted as committee to move that discussion to full council. We also discussed the Health and Human Services, creating a border commission. And the committee recommended moving that to the planning commission for them to work on. So those are two items from the planning and development committee. Park and Rex?
Uh, we just had a update about the Commons Park build. Uh, we discussed running, running or having the utilities checked on the building at the very top of the fields down there. Uh, we discussed the kiosk idea and passport idea, both directly to trying to get towards, down towards this place. And that was all that we covered. It's all those times that one gets pulled by the bolt.
And finally, uh, judiciary committee met.
Well, we met last week. It was a very short meeting, um, but there was some discussion on if a council member might have violated section five point zero five of the charter and we recommended that to go to full council for a further discussion. Do you want me to discuss more of that or wait till?
Yes, we can do that now.
Okay. Um, to be very quick, um, Mr. Johnny Flowers had, uh, sent an email from the city email account to the code enforcement officer that read, um, please get this violation cleaned up today, please. This is atrocious. Signed, Jake Flowers. Um, and this could be a central violation of section five point zero five of the city charter, which reads, neither the council nor any of its members shall in any manner dictate the appointment or removal of any administrative officers or employees when the city manager or any of the subordinates are empowered to appoint unless otherwise provided by this charter. But the council may express its views and fully and freely discuss with the manager anything pertaining to appointment and removal of such officers and employees except for the purpose of inquiries and investigations. The council's members shall deal with the officers and employees who are subject to the direction and supervision of the city manager solely through the city manager. And neither the council nor its members shall give orders to any such officer or employee either publicly or privately, except that the council may require the department of law and finance that reports information and opinions as council shall.
Okay. Um, Mr. Flowers, you then, did you want to say something?
Um, well, it, I, yeah, I do want to say something. Um, I was sitting at eight thirty-one Chestnut Street. And I made my second round looking at this trash that was sitting. Water bottle falls more than anything I've ever seen. Uh, but I was looking at this trash just piled up in front of eight thirty-one. It looked like somebody had been evicted and all the property that they had in their apartment set out on the street that were so it, it just, I thought I, I thought I was, usually I go through Mr. Holmes before I, I haven't done this before. I go through Mr. Holmes, ask him to ask Austin, our code enforcement officer, to clean this up. But that was a Saturday afternoon and I just, it just went through me like, ooh. Thought I did him, but I didn't do him on the email. I just went directly to Austin, our code enforcement officer. So, uh, I did do it. I mean, I, I did went directly to him, but I thought I was actually going to him and then CCing, um, Austin, which is normally what I do. But I didn't, that's, I'm probably not the only person sitting here that's went directly to a department head and said something they needed to do. So I don't know what the big deal is. Well, Fred.
Yes, sir.
Uh, technically you, you did not do it the way it should have been done. I understand where you're coming from. Um, the fact of the matter often already addressed the situation. It was a situation where a tenant had left all the trash, which I'm sure, John, you've had tenants leave trash and messes in your, your places. Uh, the landlord was out of the country at the time, so, um, he often cannot just go and pick it up. That's not something that we do. Um, I'm not really overly concerned with it. I know Mr. Flowers didn't do it on purpose. Um, and in my younger days, I used to address employees like that. Fortunately, in my older years, I've learned that we don't talk to employees that way.
Wait, 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 wait.
But, but, let me finish. That's not the way I would have addressed an employee. Okay? What I'm, what, what I'm
You don't know the intent, Mr. Flowers, let, let me.
Please let me finish, okay? I read the intent. I, I could, I could tell the intent.
No intent there.
But that's not the way that you phrase it, okay? So what I'm trying to say is that this is no big deal, but we don't trust, address our employees that way. I don't address my employees that way. Okay? Um, that's why this is, is a big concern. Uh, he can't go and just clean it up. That's not his job. His job is code enforcement, which he had already done. So I'm willing just to let the thing drop and just move on.
Mr. Flowers, did you want to respond to that?
Well, I mean, how can you interpret words? I believe I said please. It wasn't like I was giving the orders, but that's okay. You knew what you wanted to do. It didn't matter to me.
Well, I, I want to say, as president, council is brought to my attention. So I had two, two options. I could have just not said anything or moved it on to full council. I chose to follow the protocol that's laid out. So that's why we're here at this point. So it's not my decision how council wants to move forward, but I think, I hope you understand why I did what I did. So there is a process in place to handle this. Um, it's not my decision. So, um, I'm not sure if Mr. Rowe would like to weigh in, that he doesn't have to, uh, or other council comments, I guess.
The only comment I have is I was at the committee meeting. Um, I'm a little concerned about Mr. Flowers' comment that that was not his intent. When in the committee meeting, he stated he didn't send it from his city email. He sent it from his personal email, which
No, he didn't say that. And I heard that.
It was, it was said. Um, but that's, that's where I think my concern is.
Would you like me to get up now and just go ahead and throw me off council? Well, let's, let's move on.
Okay. Well, I, like I said, I'm just following.
I understand. Go ahead.
Alright. So I guess at this point, if we're just gonna move forward, we will, um, I think Mr. Kelly is owed an apology though. So that's all I'll say on that part.
So I will apologize to him. I don't know how you, still I don't know how you can interpret the words as to my intent.
Yep, that's, I understand.
Alright. I'll tell him I'm sorry.
Um, I don't, are there any other committees that met? I don't believe so. I don't believe so. All right. Moving on to department updates. I think the fire chief was on for tonight, however, he's not here, correct?
He notified me he would not be here.
Okay.
Sure.
And is, was Mr. Cohen up for tonight?
No. He left me his report. He had to go home early today. Not here.
Okay. Would you like to go?
Forward now?
Yes, sir.
As I said earlier, ODOT project is not complete. They're coming back to replace the paint that was already, that some has already worn off. Water project continued that D.B. Weber is on Chestnut Street and then will be moving to Jackson Street. Today, D.B. Weber performed a hot cap on Chestnut Street. I've got great news for you. 452 tons of salt was delivered last week in preparation for this weekend. No salt. So I've heard anywhere from two inches to 12 inches. We will know more as we get closer to the weekend. Leave pickup will continue on Wednesdays only until December 17th. The dog park is nearing completion. The gates will remain locked until signs are completed. The asphalt is a walking path only and not designed for vehicles. With that being said, it will be valid being installed for the safety of everything. If you've not been down to the dog park, when it opens up, I would encourage you. It's very, very, very nice. I don't have a dog. It almost convinces me to go get a dog, but I'm not getting a dog.
What you want?
No, I don't want a dog, John. Thank you very much. But with that being said, that's the report for today.
Did you say leave pickup wouldn't go until December 17th?
No, December 17th on Wednesday dawn.
Okay.
So if you have leave to be picked up, please call. I'll forward that on to Jason. He can get it put on the calendar. Any other question? I don't believe.
Thank you, Mr. Holmes. Okay. Law Director report, that's three of four is yours.
I was wondering if the city auditor could give a brief update on changes to the bill next cycle?
Sure, yeah. So I think it was October 8th, an ordinance was passed to add a $3 surcharge for the storm sewers. So that was on second reading. So it passed on October 8th. It didn't go into action until November 8th. And so to make sure that the, that no customer was ever billed for any period of time that, I guess, no, sorry. September 8th, this is what was passed. October 8th is when it became law. And so we didn't want that charge to appear on any bills until after the month of October was ended. So the, the bill of November 1st through November 31st, meaning that the bill that goes out in December is the one that will have that charge. Is that what you're looking for?
Yes. I did have one. Couple of points. At a special meeting last year, a question was, was raised. Of course, I wasn't here, but my answer is a question was raised about legislation that is proposed by the planning commission and come to council. I believe there was a, an error in what was said. Council does have authority to pass an ordinance that deviates from the proposal submitted by the planning commission. By the way, this applies both under the charter and under the statutory form of government. The applicable source of authority is ORC 713.2, sorry, 12. If the planning commission presents a proposal to council, if council adopts it as is, it only requires a majority vote. A majority vote would pass the proposal as is. The, however, if council passes, ultimately passes an ordinance that deviates in any way from that proposal, 713.12 requires a 75% vote. So it's a heightened super majority, but it still can be done. What that means is if there is a deviation from the proposal that fails to get a 75% vote, then it can't pass. However, if it's exactly the same as what's proposed by the planning commission, a majority vote is sufficient to pass. Of course, that's, and zoning land use regulations as a general cannot be passed unless suspension of rules or, or as a burden to city, still have a majority vote comes in plan on the, you know, 30 days before this. We just wanted to clarify that.
That's all you have?
At this time, is there any questions about the storm sewer? Any questions concerning the storm sewer surcharge?
Thank you, Mr. Rowe. So we're moving on to legislation. We do need to amend the agenda for second reading ordinance 8025. First reading ordinance 8225, 8325, resolution 2360, 2361, 2362, 2363. I'll make a motion to amend the agenda to add those items.
Second.
What is 2363?
Yeah. It's not with your.
It's a surprise.
Yeah, it is.
I'm excited.
Okay. Motion on the fours or a second? There is a second.
Yeah.
It's just a thought. Quick, hold on a little.
Flowers?
Yes.
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 Yes. Okay. With that, we'll move to second reading ordinance 7625.
An ordinance changing the city's municipal income tax split effective January 1st, 2026, and new feeling ordinance 19-21. Whereas council finds it is in the best interest of the city to change the income tax split for the city's municipal income tax revenue. Whereas council finds the appropriate income tax split is as follows. Allocation of municipal income tax revenue to the general fund, park fund, and capital improvement fund respectively at a ratio of 92%, 2%, and 6%. Now therefore will be ordained by the council of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio as follows. Effective January 1st, 2026, the city's municipal income tax shall be divided 92% to the general fund, 2% to the parks and recreation fund, and 6% to the capital improvement fund. Council hereby finds and determines that all formal actions taken relative to the adoption of this ordinance were taken in an open meeting of the Nelsonville City Council and in all deliberations of council and of its committees, if any, which resulted in formal action, were taken in meetings open to the public and full compliant with the applicable legal requirements. This ordinance shall be in full force effective at the earliest time committed by law, due in acts by council on second reading on 24th of November, 2025.
Okay. Motion to adopt? So move citizens' comments. Citizens' comments. If we can. I'm jumping ahead.
I'll second it.
Okay. Citizens' comments. Council discussion.
Well, um, so the finance committee recommended this, or this legislation to council in order to balance the general fund for the budget for 2026 by reallocating some of the income tax revenue that was going into the capital improvements and into the, into the general fund. However, there has been a development affecting a line item in the capital improvement fund for 2026 that would throw it out of balance. So I don't know if we need to figure that out before making a change like this.
Certainly just quite to do so. The capital improvement fund has less constraints on it in terms of the budget. It doesn't have to be balanced. It can, like legally, you are allowed to carry over spend to make those kinds of investments. So the general fund does have a sort of a stronger requirement that it is balanced in that sense. Just for additional context.
Appreciate that. I am less concerned about this than I was. Still concerned, but not enough to, I'll make a motion to table this until later, anything like that. Be able to cross certain bridges as we approach.
Any other discussion?
So is this being done because we're running a little short on money?
Concerning the general fund, yes, there is a shortfall for this year.
Certainly, yeah, for 2026.
But before the criticism starts, once this is passed, and I hear it already starting, years ago, the income tax split used to be 8515 many years ago. 85 to general, 15 to capital improvement. And then there was a split that it went to 88 for general and to capital improvement, a decrease with 2% going to a created park fund. And that happened about the time that the .25 pool levy expired. The auditor at the time, I believe, recommended keeping that, but the council declined to do so.
Yes, that's incorrect.
What part is not correct?
About all of them.
Well, that is true. So anyway, what happened? I mean, so now we're proposing this.
I can tell you what it was, if you want to hear it.
Go ahead.
When we, in 1998, we put the .25 on for the pool debt. It was a 15-year structure. And we always, it was always went into the pool. That matured at the end of 2013. We put it back on after we went and council passed, and I have a copy of the ordinance. And it went to the residents to vote that back on. And it was to go in capital improvement. And there's no changing it by law. When you go to the residents and tell them, this is why we need that money. It's supposed to go into capital improvement. And the other 1.5 was going into general fund. That 25% was also a 15-year situation. And it will mature in '28, the end of '28, if I do my figures right. So I don't get where you've got, the council, to my knowledge, and from a legal standpoint, has never been able to have the flexibility on income tax because of the wording and the way it goes to the residents. They vote on the specific place that it's going.
I had a copy of the ordinance somewhere where it was changed to. I was on.
Oh, it was changed. Yeah, it was changed. But what I'm saying is it should never have been changed.
Our law director at the time didn't have an issue with it.
Probably did. Yeah, I agree.
Yeah. He didn't have an issue with it. And that, that's what exactly what he just read, though, is actually what was passed.
Right.
Yeah. It's, and we're not talking about tax levies. We're talking about the income tax split that the city receives.
Right.
Yeah.
We were just going to keep our mouths shut, wait, and then we get on in January and fix it.
Okay. So I'm just saying what we're doing is not improper.
Probably not from what you've been doing.
Okay.
But, well, what I'm saying is.
You were actually part of those changes. That's what I'm saying. So I'm, what, so when you say us, pointing at us, just remember you were part of that when it happened.
Yeah, that's the reason I know what the ordinance and the resolution that went to the board of elections. And I think it's like 62 or 69% of voters agreed to it.
This doesn't affect that though.
It is.
This is income tax allocation.
That's what I'm talking about.
Yeah. Okay.
It was a specific levy.
No. There was a specific vote. There's not a levy. It's a specific vote that we had, if I had brought my file.
We're not changing the income tax amount.
No, you're not changing the 1.75.
Correct.
You're changing the allocation.
Yeah, that, that .25 of the 1.75 was voted in to go into capital improvement. So I would like to.
It's also in the code ordinances.
Yeah, somewhere, I'm not going to dig through my paperwork, but I had the ordinance that was passed in '21, I believe it was.
Yeah, I think as I saw the, the ordinance numbers and it was in like quote 36, 37. It went back to one and a half to general fund and .25 into capital improvement. So.
But this is the action that we're looking to take now.
Yeah.
And then if there is further action down the road, then so be it. And if what you addressed earlier transpires, then we can look at, or not we, but council can look at it at that time.
I have no concern. .25 of 1.75 is a little over 14%. I don't know how we can look at a .25% voter approved measure that represents 14% of the city's current income tax collection rate and approve, reducing it to 6%.
Didn't this come from your committee?
It did.
These figures come from your committee?
Yeah, it did.
So now you're questioning. I mean, I, I, I'm not arguing or making it, but now you're questioning the actual figures that you did.
Yes, I am capable of receiving new information and questioning things I previously taken for granted.
I'm not trying to argue with you. I'm not trying, I just ask you.
Yeah. I'm telling you, yes. The answer to your question is yes. I, I, I was, I was fine until you would not let me answer. That's all I'll say.
Okay. Yeah, so my, my understanding is the former law director gave advice on the topic of the allocation in the past. I have not studied it other than to know that that happened. I, unless, I'll just say if, if council asks me to look into it, I will. But I'm inclined, unless, unless I'm convinced it's completely wrong, I'm going to just restate the same opinion that happened before. As an institutionalist, I believe, that that's required of the Department of Law is to be consistent over time unless it's clearly and obviously wrong, which happens from time to time, but not often.
This is clearly and obviously wrong.
So, so the, the previous, if I may, I apologize for interrupting. The previous law. So so the the previous, if I may apologize for interrupting, the previous law director was one of the, you know, um. The the most, uh, I, you know, you would say he's probably one of the best municipal lawyers in the state.
That one, yes, but you had one between him and Rogue.
He wasn't the one that took place when that happened, so that was with uh, that was with Mr. Hunter, so.
Twenty one, I thought he was gone, twenty two?
So. So I believe it's happened twice since.
I didn't see eighteen, I saw twenty and I think it happened like three times, there's three ordinance or something.
So I'm just saying that he's, you know, he's one of the most well regarded municipal lawyers in the state of Ohio. You know, I can't imagine that it would be, you know, incorrect.
I mean, I haven't been asked to look into it, but I will if council does, I'm just, you know. Um, I'm just stating that given given the factors, unless it's unless his advice is clearly wrong. I think just for consistency, um, the city needs to follow that path to whatever is, and again, I haven't looked into it, so I don't know exactly what it was. And this kind of hearing was then described to me, um, but just just keep that in mind.
What are the consequences if we table this until you can look into it?
The consequences, whatever you would want, I mean.
Um, we would still want to revisit it or another solution for the general fund.
Right.
Before twenty twenty six.
It would just be the December council having to resolve, yeah.
And it would still be illegal, right? I mean, if that is in fact wrong, it shouldn't actually be the current allocation of compensation. It should be fourteen point two, or I don't know what level of resolution, so it's. The same problem regardless.
It's just same problem regardless.
Any further discussion, counsel?
I I my final comment will be that. You know, we look at passing this this evening because December's council has enough other problems to solve. And if this, if we ask Mr. Rogue to look into it, and it does become an issue, we can we can easily correct it at that point, that sound like. Would that be a true statement? We could probably have uh one instance to rectify that. Because this this isn't going to take effect till January one.
Right, um, so just remember, there are only four council seats for December, so um. Look, or first reading, second reading, and then it would have to go into effect thirty days after that, so it won't go into effect in the first.
If we. If the December council is able to hold a special meeting, then if they're able to appoint council members, say at the first meeting and have a special meeting, they can probably.
Yeah, no, I mean, all of those contingencies, I just can't assume the circumstances, I can only assume what's worst case scenario, yeah, okay.
And is this something that could be passed on an emergency or does this have to have? If like we do discover there is an issue in December.
That's a good question.
We even pass something on emergency day on December first.
I don't know the answer to that question.
And if that's the case, if it can't be passed on emergency, then it isn't going to go into effect until, you know, the end of January, anyway.
What's the present rate now on the general fund ninety two percent? What's that coming up from?
Currently, the split is eighty eight general, ten capital, and two percent park and rec.
Which according to Sue is already a violation, is that what you were saying?
That's my opinion. And some legal, I've had some legal conversations. And I'm sorry about, I mean, I even had the wording at home that went on the ballot.
Herring, no further discussion.
Like to make a motion um to table this ordinance um. Until at least the finance committee can discuss um further, perhaps kind of with a recommendation. Or um until maybe the law director look into the advice that was given um. Before and verify that this is. Not going to incur a risk on the city.
To be aware of uh. The finance committee will be only in effect for six more days.
Um, and then. Okay, there's a there's a motion on the floor, should we second that, then we'll do discussion. Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second.
Clear call or roll?
Do we have discussion before we?
We want to have discussion.
Well, this is to, okay, yes, go ahead, go ahead with the discussion.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, you're right, you're right, go ahead.
I have nothing to say, I thought we were supposed to have discussion before.
Yeah, you're right, you're right. Well, so the discussion I would have is that the the finance committee, uh, as it's currently, will only be uh. In effect for six more, four more days, right, you know, six more days. And so then December will only have four council members to initially begin with. And three other council members will have to be appointed before committees are filled. So when's that, when is that going to be? Like, how quickly is that realistically, how quickly is that going to be able to take effect as well?
I do foresee a world in which um perhaps even on December first. Um, we can go from four council members to five council members. At the very least.
Well, December first will be the first day that the new council members will be able to take action to be able to schedule a meeting, so now you're talking at least the second.
That's true.
Right, so so if we're talking procedurally here, you know, now you're talking about the the second of December that you're having a meeting. And so you're saying you can appoint another council member at that meeting?
Unless council, this meeting announces scheduling a special meeting. So the first.
And do that with.
I mean, the council's going to be swatted, so that's perfect.
So.
Okay, so we could need to do initial council housekeeping, you know, things on the first um. And we likely will not have um any. Movement from the finance committee by then, because, you know, we're looking at holiday week right now. Um, however. On the first, when the council president and vice president are selected from the body. Um, those votes could get together to. Consider committee assignments and the finance committee could, at the earliest. Convenience, we could have a recommendation by the first regular meeting in um December um. And.
So if we table this ordinance, then I assume that affects passing ordinance seventy seven twenty five, which is the for the budget for next year.
Yeah.
Just keep that in mind also.
Mr. Robell, um, I'm I'm not asking to rush you, I'm asking just because it's a hall, a hall, a holiday week, um. How quickly do you think you could deliver to us a legal opinion on this question? I'm so sorry to ask, I really don't want to, I feel bad doing that, you know.
I don't know, can I look into it and then?
Yes. I mean, I'm fine with that, I don't speak to the whole of council, sorry, um, yeah, I think that would be great if we got an uh.
You know, do you mean you know council tomorrow morning with a timeline?
Yes, yeah.
So do you see us actually incurring, okay, say, so without asking a question, what do you think? Is there any increase, say, we are incurring risk right now, given we are for a hypothetical? The past this, are we increasing a level of risk in any way?
I think the risk is so high that it's not significantly effective.
I, oh, you're trying to sneak on me.
So there could also be a world in which we can pass it and repeal it as soon as we get um Google's.
Absolutely.
To the contrary.
Okay, so could you repeat your motion that's on the floor?
Um, well, um.
We got a motion to second, so we're going to vote up or down.
It was a motion to table um ordinance seventy six twenty five um until um. The law director is able to provide um a an opinion on the advice that was previously given. And or um the finance committee has the opportunity to um discuss this further.
Okay, that's your motion for the caller roll.
Mr. Pat?
No. No.
Mr. Taylor?
No.
Joseph Saul? No.
Okay, okay, hold on, thank you.
Although John, maybe, yeah. Yeah, um.
Motion to adopt.
For the reason that I just.
The motion to adopt is already pending because, yeah, was there a second amendment?
Yeah, there was.
All right, motion to adopt ordinance seventy six twenty five. No, yeah, this is what we're calling the the roll one.
Yeah.
All right.
Welcome.
Yes, roll call.
Mr. Clement?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Chris Joseph Saul? Yes.
Yes.
Flowers?
No.
Yes. Ordinance seventy six twenty five passes. Ordinance for second reading seventy seven twenty five.
An ordinance to make appropriations for current yearly budget and expenditures of the city of Nelsonville. Athens County, Ohio for the twenty twenty six year. Whereas the city needs a permanent appropriations budget ordinance for the year twenty twenty six as required by ordinance fifty four dash twenty five. Now therefore, made or named by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio follows. The council hereby establishes and provides as the current expenditures. Of the city of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio for the twenty twenty six year. The sums described and set forth in Exhibit A, a copy of which is attached here to and incorporated during by reference. Such funds shall be and hereby are set aside and appropriated. For the twenty twenty six year. Accordingly, the sum of nine million nine hundred sixty nine thousand fifty dollars is hereby incorporated. The city auditor is hereby authorized to submit the city's certificate of resources pursuant to this ordinance to the Athens County Budget Commission. So it shall be a full course of effect immediately upon its adoption. Pursuant to section four point one of the Nelsonville City Charter, as this ordinance provides for appropriations for current expenses. Generally enacted by council on second reading the twenty fourth day of November two thousand twenty five.
Motion to adopt, so live citizens' comments.
No, we're just gonna second.
Second.
Citizens' comment.
Just a question, I thought the last meeting you tabled this, that this would be the first reading, because you gave me the, you know, the um. Graph that you had. And it had, the ordinance had a blank in it. And you didn't want to fill that in until it had been looked at. I thought you had tabled it.
They tabled it and then after executive, they came back after they passed.
Uh, okay, so I get for not saying, huh?
So any uh other citizens' comments on this ordinance? Council discussion. For caller roll?
Mr. Clement?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Joseph Saul?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Flowers?
No.
Mr. Tech?
Yes.
Ordinance seventy seven twenty five passes. Okay, ordinance for a second reading eighty twenty five.
This is first reading.
First reading. There also is on here bars.
Oh, tiny homes.
Yeah, the tiny homes. We read it, our first reading was at the last, I apologize, I don't have, probably have.
Was that one, I think it's song.
I was wondering, I don't, I don't know, I wasn't aware of tiny homes.
I had dog park.
Tiny homes would be, we'll have a dog park. Yes, if we had.
So what was it?
Did we kick this back to the planning?
If I understand correctly, the first, the planning commission did not in fact recommend R one as the zone. For tiny homes.
Um, so my understanding is they have a document that they said they make the recommendation, but I believe they had a move, they had a motion. Correct me, Mr. Holmes, if I'm wrong, they had a motion.
Motion was made is to put the tiny homes in the R one.
Okay. I did want to succeed.
I think we had like um some citizens' comments at the last meeting, and this meeting with some concerns about this, um. I don't think the tiny home ordinance needs to be quickly passed or anything, but it'd be sent back to the county. Can you kind of address some of those concerns, uh, just to look into it?
We had this up to council, whether to refer it back or. Tell it.
Other people feel about the planning commission, kind of like looking into the concerns, the citizens have raised, and then maybe. Coming back with um. A recommendation that of those concerns are already kind of addressed in it, or?
Um, it does seem like the citizen has a.
Sorry.
What we're doing.
Oh, right.
Do we, do we have, we can't, we have an ordinance on trailers. Uh, would this, would this uh go into a, uh, have anything to do with the trailer ordinance that we have?
I believe Mr. Holmes wants to make a comment.
But the the comment I wanted to make is that this has been discussed at two planning commission meetings. Those planning commission meetings were advertised publicly, and everyone had an opportunity. We have a clear definition of what a tiny home is, and now where a tiny home should go. So, um, I mean, just because you pass it doesn't mean it can't be adjusted, amended, or discussed, but. Just to kick it back to the uh planning commission, I think would be a process. That's one of the things that the board of commissioners.
Hold, hold on. Okay, go ahead.
That's, that's one of the things that the board of commissioners, I think, that really felt very strongly about. They're giving a, uh, giving something to work on, they work on it, they advertise it. If they advertise it, 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 you know, obviously advertise it like any other public meeting, people are entitled. And eligible to come to those meetings, am I right, better go?
Yes.
You know? We have the meeting, the the planning commission members meet, they had a very lively discussion about it. Uh, they all agreed a- upon it, this was introduced back in twenty twenty one. Twenty twenty one, we're getting calls all the time about people wanting to put tiny homes in. We need to be tiny home friendly.
Why?
Because it's a new thing that that people, no, I'm not, I'm not flowers, please.
All right, hold on, hold on, hold on, Mr. Mr.
What I'm trying to explain to you is the times have changed. Remember before we had roundabouts, people didn't like roundabouts, and now we have roundabouts. What I'm talking about is that we've been working on the tiny home. The planning commission, there you go, don't go to sleep on me here, there. The planning commission has done their job, been responsible, had a public hearings, and I think it's time to pass. I would strongly disagree about referring it back, uh, back to the planning commission.
Not, at least not with any specific questions in mind, um, I think when it comes to. Trailers, tiny homes are.
I think when it comes to trailers, tiny homes are permanent fixtures.
We, we have a definition.
How can somebody live in a ten by tens? I'm understanding that.
I could.
Okay, hold on, hold on, hold on.
Four hundred square feet, two thousand. Clearly in the.
A thousand square feet.
All right, hold on, yeah, so it says Exhibit A attached is the planning commission's recommendation, which their report, which is Exhibit A. And it lays out everything that they put into this. So.
I mean, we can clearly get your copy of it so people can, can read it, but it is a viable housing option. We looked at it, we studied it. Voted that, voted that.
And I know this will be a controversial comment. Hold on, hold on, hold on. This is council discussion. Yeah, thank you.
So I can say I've never read it, I just heard about it.
Okay, hold on.
I would like to read it, I have misinformation.
So this comment will catch a lot of, a lot of flack, but we're not reinventing the wheel. Other communities do this all across the country. This is nothing new. So it's as simple as either we do or we don't.
Could we perhaps read some of the specifications in the minutes?
Clerk would like to read the planning commission's recommendation.
Well, I'll do it.
Can I make your copy?
Okay. He's going to read Exhibit A from the planning commission.
Tiny home regulations for the city of Nelsonville. We, the planning commission, have taken the request by members of council to review a policy that would define and either allow for or not the use of tiny homes within the Nelsonville city limits. After careful consideration from our committee, it is our recommendation that city council allows tiny homes within the city limits with some stipulations. Neighboring communities have taken the approach of not allowing these units, claiming they are too hard to enforce. We feel that allowing them with some guidelines will be a niche that could make our community even more enticing to tourism and future development. At a, at a high level of our plan consists of, one, allowing tiny homes to be included in the list of accessory structures in section two, twenty-seven point zero four, point zero one, point zero five. Defining tiny houses per the attached recommendations. And three, allowing for tiny houses that meet the minimum requirements to be either A, allowed as accessory structures, one per lot of existing lots, or B, allowed within certain zones defined in the city limits. Note, these zones have not been outlined as we felt. These zones have not been outlined as we felt it would be wasted effort if the premise of our suggestion to allow tiny zones was not agreed upon by council. We desire defining these permissible zones could be decided at a later point. See, any exceptions outside of A or B above would need to be taken to the Board of Zoning Appeals for consideration. Furthermore, we feel all tiny homes should be registered with a registration fee in line with the annual cost of administering these structures. It is our recommendation that council acts upon this quickly, whether to allow or disallow tiny homes as they have started to show up in Nelsonville city limits and we fear there will be more if not regulated. Thank you. Betty Jo Parson, Nelson's own planning commission chairperson.
Okay, any other council questions?
Well, are you saying we already have tiny homes? Is that what they did say?
No.
No, huh?
No.
They're already starting to show up and they won't be read? They're starting to show up?
There's one up on the corner of the North Street.
So, okay, hold on, council discussion. Did I answer your question?
Well, they, yeah, they tell me where they're showing up.
Okay.
I'd like to see.
You want to see a picture?
All right.
Yeah.
So. All right, so clerk call the roll on passing this ordinance.
Does citizens' comment? Any comments?
All right, motion to adopt, citizens' comments.
John Meeks, Walnut Street, obviously having talked last council meeting, but you shut me down after letting others talk, so I'm back. I'm not a hundred percent against it, but I'm a hundred percent against the ordinance. So after talking with Ms. Beach, I understand there is a need for aging community, smaller homes, easier to take care of, children up and gone, I get it. I'm the, I'm the one, my children are up and gone, but I'm looking for a little bit bigger and a little different. My problem is, we already have zoning for residents in this city. Why do we need another ordinance? Why not tell them like we would anybody else? Fill out your application, apply for a variance. We have a structure in place to take care of this. So why do we need a new ordinance to address just tiny homes? So how's that going to be fair if someone has, okay, I can build a tiny home, say forty, fifty thousand dollars, but I can't put a brand new two hundred thousand dollar mobile home in. I mean, go get a variance is what I'd be told. And I could have a hearing, I could go through it and do it all. But we do not need another ordinance to address this. We have a process in place already. And it's called, file your application, get a variance. It's that simple. We don't need it. It's, it's just adding more and more. There's already a process in place following. It's, it's that simple. I don't think you should pass it that quick. You know, Mr. Holmes said, I got people need answers right now. I got them calling and asking me. Was it a month ago, meeting? That's easy. The answer should have been, file your application, ask for a variance. Then we control how many go on each property or on the lots and this and that. We don't run in like Ms. Brooks said, the planes, if you ever go into the planes lately, they've got them stacked in rows. Is that what we want? No. And then, and then that, some of the words in it, want to go straight to tourism. I mean, do, do we need to maybe feed off tourism in Nelsonville some? Absolutely, I won't deny that. But I don't think, you know, residents want Airbnbs popping up in their new neighborhoods right beside them. Trust me, I work in a county that has a lot of them. You don't understand the headaches you'll get with them.
Are you saying that people rent in that?
Tourism, if you're wanting to do it for tourism, that tells me you're going to allow them to be Airbnbs.
Uh, Mr. Roe would like to say something. So a couple of thoughts, the plane's primary problem was historically they did not have zoning, they now have zoning.
And we have, um.
And our zoning wouldn't allow what happened in the planes.
You're right, but we don't need this ordinance for that either.
I understand what you're saying, but just let's not complete the two, right? I mean, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't allow what happened in the planes to happen here currently without this one.
Well, because they're already being built, it's happening, so we.
No, not what is in the planes. Again, two different things, they're distinct. With the incident that you're referring to in the planes is completely different than what's happening here currently.
Currently, but it's what we could run into.
No, it's, you just stated, our, our zoning wouldn't allow it anyway. This ordinance wouldn't allow, wouldn't change that.
Then why do we need this ordinance if we have something in place to take care of it?
The issue with the planes, again, two different distinct issues.
Let's throw the planes out. I'm sorry, correct.
No, I'm just saying, no, no, I'm just.
So let's, let's throw the planes out. Let's, let's discuss Nelsonville.
Right.
You know, it's just like our rentals without off-street parking. We've got ordinance, a threat, don't happen.
Okay, I think I believe Mr. Roe had something else.
So be very careful about relying on variances as a robust tool. They're not designed to be robust. In fact, if variances are done too robustly, that can constitute spot zoning, which is illegal. And in fact, the city of Athens is running into a problem that, somewhat relatedly, but also unrelatedly, you've probably seen in the news where they passed that ordinance to allow for the constant, uh, the wagon type homeless.
Hottest open huts?
Yes.
My coworker is telling me that story.
The law director in Athens advised the council, if you pass this, it will constitute spot zoning, you're opening yourself up for future litigation because if a future variance is applied for and that applicant is treated differently than this applicant, that will open you up to litigation. What I'm, what I'm saying is, when you treat variances as either carte blanche or a robust mechanism to change, substantively change the zoning code, you're not allowed to use a variance that way. That will increase the city's long-term litigation exposure. Whether or not tiny homes in whatever fashion is a good idea or a bad idea is not my concern as city attorney. I don't know what the answer is. That's not. But I'm just saying, the risk here is if you're going to have them, I think you do need to have a, an ordinance. It should be one that I think the community can coalesce around and agree. I mean, sure, we, we can have disagreements, but um, if it's going to be workable, it needs to be, have, have some broad buy-in, but we cannot rely on the variance procedure as a substitute for it without increasing the long-term litigation exposure to the city.
Didn't you just say that one could affect the other one if one was treated differently with a variance than the order?
That's what, that's the risk of spot zoning.
Yeah. So would this ordinance?
No. No, a zoning, an ordinance changing the zoning regulations to permit tiny homes is just like the zoning code as a whole.
So quick question, citizen.
Yes.
I'm not aware, so I'm just asking. Can this be written to where these are owner-occupied structures, which is what we need in this city and not Airbnb's? We're just not allowing Airbnb's anything other than what was created before they passed the ordinance. You know, my concern is, older houses around me, they fall down, they get torn down, land bank takes them. People start popping in these little homes, I start having Airbnb's beside my own. That concerns me.
So, so quick, quick question, if I may, on the Airbnb. So it's been brought up, I personally have brought it up before in a planning development about creating Airbnb regulations, okay? And I, and copying grand bills. But here's the thing, that's like saying that you have a primary residence currently that you own. And let's just say you build a new house, a bigger one that you want, nicer, whatever, and then you take your house and turn it, you can't, you can't dictate that, you can't A, turn it into a rental or an Airbnb, we don't have, we can't do that.
Airbnb is low.
Well, you can, well, they've just kind of said you can't. Yeah, stopping it, but the thing is, you can't. I don't think you should necessarily do that entirely. We have people have, had that issue in the past. I think we should create, we don't have to reinvent the wheel here. Granville has a great example of how they do it and it's all on their website. I think copy paste and incorporate it in this town because I know you don't think that tourism is what we should be looking at, but unfortunately, we're not going back to manufacturing.
I think it's fifty, fifty.
I, I'm just saying that tourism is what we are, is our, we're a destination now, right? We have assets such as the Hockingville Ecenic Railway, the Stewart Opera House. You know, these are things that are going to draw people here to this area and it's going to be more tourism based. It's not going to be, we're not putting in any manufacturing, I don't see any of that going in. We're not doing mining, we're not doing, there's no canal. But.
But also.
I, I'm just saying, I'm just saying that, you know, tourism is probably what our best bet is at this point.
I agree with you, I think.
I mean, Mr. Roe, tourism pays my paycheck. I, I mean, but I'm not a hundred percent against it, but I'm thinking there's got to be a better way to do this. I mean.
I, I agree, but that's a separate ordinance, that's a separate, that's a separate.
I, I couldn't be a slump over it. I hate Granville, I tried it once when I was younger. It's not for me. Uh, but it's, it's one of those things where, you know, what do we also want to be? We want to, we want to have families living here. We keep talking about, we want people to own their home, have pride, be here. But we are a city of like, what, almost eighty percent rentals? Let's, let's take that eighty and flip it down to fifty and get rid of some of these rentals and get people in here. But if we continue to build these little houses, which is, wait, our Airbnb's and rentals, we're not going to get there. We want permanent residents, right? Nobody in this community.
It could also be permanent residents.
Run, run our citizens' comments. Um, I see a lot of people wanting to speak here. Thank you, thank you.
You shut them down.
I just want to say that I.
I give me.
I was under some false information and someone told me that they could be a hundred square feet, four hundred square feet. But here's the thing, we already are a town of tiny homes. I saw real estate. So I know in this town, there are a lot of houses that are nine hundred square feet. They're little houses that were built when the mines were here. They're little mining cottages, four rooms. They're already here, but they fit in the street, they fit in the landscape. So however you all decide to do this, um, I just really want you to think about the future of the town and how, I don't have a problem if somebody wants to have an eight hundred square foot house. I, I think that's great, as long as it fits in and it's not brought in in the form of a storage shed. And then finished inside, because that could happen. They, it happened in the planes, they set it on a permanent foundation, it's made of wood and it's, I don't know how many square feet, but it, it doesn't fit, you know? So as long as we think about how these things can fit, they're already here, you know? When I started, when I heard that they'd be four hundred to a thousand, I'm like, there's a lot of nine hundred square foot houses in town. But they fit, so that's it.
One second, Mr. Holmes. Uh, citizens' comment?
You gave me at the last meeting that paperwork or to read the information on them and I did and I learned a lot. I'm wondering, instead of just saying R-one, which is residential, can it be listed as a conditional use under R-one? And we can make certain that it's not on wheels and so that solid foundation that, the other thing that caught my eye was it said we, we, we will be requiring that it sit on a lot. Um, what's going to correct you unless, unless it comes in as a conditional use that they don't put two tiny homes on one lot? Um, you know, I, you can also look at corner lots and, um, do they disturb or, or, um, traffic? There was just some things like that, that, but if they're a conditional use, they go to VZA and, you know, they can act as like this.
Conditional uses require variances, right? I know that there are conditional use variances.
Well, it's a conditional use permit. It goes through a process, but it's, it's.
Okay, now, hold on, hold on. Excuse me. Do we not have discussions in the crowd while we're trying to do this?
Thank you. Uh, the conditional use permitting process is distinct from variance. They're, they're both overseen by the, the Board of Zoning Appeals, but they are distinct procedures.
On our, our zoning codes has like the R-one and what's, what's available under that. And then conditional use under R-one is also listed. And we could just list tiny home as a conditional use under R-one.
Any other citizens' comments?
I was just not showing him.
I have a question. Is there going to be another meeting at all for that commission, that committee? The planning commission?
The tiny house, for the, yeah, for tiny houses.
Not one, it's funny, it's finished at the moment, right? Tiny homes, as far as I know, but they will continue meeting.
I mean, even if council passes the ordinance, council can always refer back to the planning commission. Can you revisit this even on a continual? Can you revisit this even on a continual basis? Because I think Mr. Holmes raised the point, you could pass it and then make changes when those changes become evident that they're necessary. So council, even if it passes it, can always make the referral back to the planning commission to continue discussion.
Council discussion. Mr. Holmes, I believe you had something to say.
The point I was trying to make is that the planning commission did a lot of work on this. They defined the size of it, they defined what had to be in it to be classified. They defined that it had to be on a solid foundation. So it's just not a willy-nilly, just allowing anything, a storage shed and throwing a toilet in there. There's actual guidelines, I think it was on the second page, it said the size of the unit and, and all that stuff. So there has been real thought that has gone into this, defining, clearly defining what a tiny home is, what's appropriate, what goes in there. So there's just not, right now, the, the situation we're in, anything could go up. Because we don't allow it, so we, we can't prevent it, so we just, whatever they go up, they go up. But what I'm, what I'm saying is if, if you even take some time and read the, the, the definition of a tiny home, uh, I think there's enough in there to pass it. And if you want the planning commission to continue working on issues as they arise, I think that's very appropriate. But, but to have something that was prevented in two thousand twenty-one, four years later, four years later, you know, we're still sitting here and, and no action, whether it's pro or con, has been taken on the tiny home. That's really unfair to any board or commission. To give them a job to do, and they were given a task to look at that, which they did. They came up with recommendations, they sent it to the council, and four years later, we're still talking about it. That's not right.
Mr. Flowers?
Um, is, are they, do they bring these homes in on, on the back of a truck? Or do they build them sticks and mortar, or?
Can I show you him a picture of it?
Go ahead.
Oh, yeah, I've seen it.
My friend, my friend's school one, she does not own proper houses.
You can purchase a kit, they're prefab.
The ordinance states only one per lot, right? I've heard that kind of.
Yeah, one, one per lot.
It doesn't explicitly say only one per lot. That's what I heard, I just want everyone to know.
Yeah, I think it was, but how do you, how do you make sure of that?
I don't know. How do we make sure of that?
They would have to file for permits.
Yeah. Um, I'm thinking like, I'm thinking a motion to amend this to where like the planning commission reviews this at three months, six months, nine months, and a year to see if any issues came up, and then to give recommendations based off of that, if any.
Oh, how, how often does the planning commission meet regularly?
Like all boards of commissions, they meet as needed.
As needed?
As needed. We're in a process right now of hiring a secretary for the board of commissions. It's like if the secretary hires, then I'm the first to get one.
Okay, any other council discussion?
Second, that, if you're, if you're actually making that.
I may add that, yeah.
I would second that question.
Yeah, I may.
Because, um, I, I do, um, I do think we need to, um, set a minimum standard um, in terms of the definitions that have been, um, written out and recommended to us um, by the planning commission as well as limitations, the zoning. Um, but I do think, um, that it should be, you know, continuously examined. So if maybe we do need to go with a more, um, conditional use permitting sort of framework then we can, um, or if it needs to be coupled with general limitations on short-term rentals, then it can, um, so, yeah.
So there's a motion on the floor.
Do you want me to restate it?
Yes.
Um, I motion we amend this ordinance, uh, and ask the planning commission to meet on a quarterly basis for at least a year to send a recommendation to council on any, um, needs that arise. And that was your second, correct?
Yes, that was me.
Court call the roll.
Mr. Saul? Yes. Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Flowers?
Yes.
Mr. Pat?
Yes.
Come in.
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Okay, and we have the motion to adopt, correct?
No.
No? All right.
Motion.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
I think we've already discussed it. Yeah, thank you. Court call the roll.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Joseph Saul? Yes. Al?
Yes.
Mr. Flowers?
Is that to adopt this ordinance?
Right, yes.
Has amended, has been amended.
With the amendment.
With the amendment, Joe.
We already voted on the amendment.
Yes, we passed the ordinance with the amendment.
With the amendment.
If the amendment passed.
Yeah, I know.
Okay.
I know.
I see what we're done? You know? Yeah, I was, Mr. Pat?
Yes.
Mr. Command?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes. Ordinance eighty, twenty-five passes.
Woo, pray the Lord! Four years!
Ordinance eighty-two, twenty-five, if someone would like to introduce it. I'll introduce it.
Hold on.
Sorry, hey.
Sorry, who am I to introduce it?
I did.
The ordinance adopting change order two for the Nelsonville Golf Car Project and declaring emergency. Whereas the city of Nelsonville has entered into a contract for the Nelsonville Golf Car Project. Whereas additional changes to the contract are recommended to compensate the project contractor for numerous unknown conditions encountered during the project. Whereas the numerous unknown conditions encountered included installing an ADA water fountain, catch basin, and a ballard and cable barrier to the park. Whereas this will be change order two for the project. Whereas the change will increase the contract price by eight thousand five hundred sixty-one dollars sixteen cents. Whereas the funds to cover the increase shall be drawn from the contingency portion of the project funding, in which there are sufficient funds to cover the increase. Now therefore be ordained by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio, as follows. City Council hereby approves change order two for the Nelsonville Golf Car Project as described more particularly in exhibit one, which is attached here to and incorporated herein by reference as is fully rewritten within. The contract price shall be increased by a sum of eight thousand five hundred sixty-one dollars sixteen cents to address installing an ADA water fountain, a catch basin, and a ballard and cable barrier, cable barrier to the park. The city manager shall have authority to enter to accept and/or authorize the change order two for the project. City Council hereby finds that this ordinance was enacted in a meeting open to the public as required by applicable law. Five members of council voting to defense with the re, two readings of this ordinance. The rules are hereby suspended for this ordinance. And this ordinance is hereby enacted on first reading pursuant to ORC seven thirty-one point one five and Nelsonville City Charter section four point zero nine through four point one one. Five members of council voting to declare an emergency. This ordinance is hereby passed as an emergency measure pursuant to ORC seven thirty-one point thirty, Article four, sections four point zero nine through four point one one, as an emergency in the operation of the city government, as the change order must be approved immediately in the interest of timely and efficient completion of the golf cart project to ensure immediate payment of expenses and avoid unnecessary escalation of expenses caused by delays in payments and is necessary for the immediate preservation of the public peace, health, safety, morals, and welfare of the city. And this one that shall be in full force and effect upon its adoption. duly enacted by council on second reading the twenty-fourth day of November, two thousand twenty-five.
Motion to suspend the rules. So move. Second.
Second.
Council discussion on suspension. Court call the roll on suspension.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yeah. Yes.
Mr. Command?
Yes. Yes.
Mr. Joseph Saul? Yes.
Motion to adopt. So move.
Seven?
Citizens' comments? Council discussion.
Um, I have not received, uh, exhibit one. I have, okay. I'm not sure.
Is it, is exhibit one like an invoice, or?
It's probably the item is.
Okay.
Yeah, um, which, there are sufficient funds in the contingency portion of the project funding to cover, um, the increase in the contract price. Um, but I still, before I vote on something, I might have. We got it, wait. That's okay. Sorry. Sorry.
This is coming from the right side.
Yeah.
Correct.
Yep.
Something for you, Ford.
Oh. They are two pager. So here's. Okay.
First, bring in your subpoenas.
Yeah.
Any other council discussion? Everyone have a chance to look at that?
Those traffic barriers are quite expensive, aren't they?
Sure they are.
Sixty-four hundred bucks?
That's, um, I mean, it's, you're not wrong, but it's not something that's affected by this change order.
It's dark, it's darkened down. I thought that was quite the dark, dark downwind.
Oh, yes, yeah, I guess that is probably referring to, um, the cable barriers. Yeah, which, um, the cable and eye bolts themselves are five fifty, the four-inch steel pipe fifteen hundred, yellow plastic post covers one thousand, and then labor and equipment to install them is thirty-four hundred. So there are several things that go into, um, that's sixty-four fifty. I'm sorry, I was looking at something else.
Okay. Any other questions? Council discussion. Okay, hearing that, court call the roll, please.
Mr. Flowers?
Yes.
Mr. Pat?
Yes.
Mr. Command?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Joseph Saul? Yes. Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Ordinance eighty-two, twenty-five passes. Ordinance eighty-three, twenty-five, if someone would like to introduce it. Uh, this is.
The ordinance approving change order one for Nelsonville Water Systems Improvement Phase Three Project and declaring. Whereas the city of Nelsonville has entered into a contract for the Nelsonville Water Systems Improvement Phase Three Project. Whereas additional changes to the contract are recommended to compensate the project contracting for numerous unknown conditions encountered during the project. Whereas the numerous unknown conditions encountered include a new construction item, a concrete trench patch that was used on Washington Street along with time and material costs, or insert a valve, unknown condition, and facilitating tie-ins to existing lines. Whereas this will be change order one for the project. Whereas the change will increase the contract price by one hundred eighty-one thousand four hundred ninety-nine dollars sixty-one cents. Now therefore be ordained by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio, as follows. City Council hereby approves change order one for the Nelsonville Water Systems Improvement Phase Three Project as described more particularly in exhibit one, which is attached here to and incorporated herein by reference as is fully rewritten within. The contract price shall be increased by a sum of one hundred eighty-one thousand four ninety-nine sixteen cents to address a new construction item, a concrete trench patch that was used on Washington Street along with time and material costs for insert a valve, unknown conditions, and facilitating tie-ins to existing lines. The city manager shall have authority to enter to accept and/or authorize the change order one for the project. City Council hereby finds that this ordinance was enacted in a meeting open to the public as required by applicable law. Five members of council voting to defend with the two readings of this ordinance. The rules are hereby suspended for this ordinance. And this ordinance is hereby enacted on the first reading pursuant to ORC seven thirty-one point one five and Nelsonville City Charter section four point zero nine through four point one one. Five members of council voting to declare an emergency. This ordinance is hereby passed as an emergency measure pursuant to ORC seven thirty-one point thirty, Article four, sections four point zero nine through four point one one, as an emergency in the operation of the city government, as the change order must be approved immediately to ensure timely and efficient completion of the Phase Two Water Project, which project is necessary to the provision of public utilities within the city and is necessary for the immediate preservation of the public peace, health, morals, or safety or welfare of the city. And this ordinance shall be in full force and effect upon its adoption. duly enacted by council on first reading the twenty-fourth day of November, two thousand twenty-five.
Motion to suspend the rules. So move. Second, council discussion on suspension. Court call the roll on suspension.
Mr. Pat?
Yes.
Mr. Command?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Joseph Saul? Yes. Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Flowers?
Yes.
Motion to adopt. So move. Any citizens' comments? Council discussion.
I, I hate to say it, um, but I don't have exhibit one. Um, if somebody does, could I just look at it so we don't have to send Ms. Harmon on another adventure? I have the credit. Okay, thank you.
This, uh, this work's already been completed also.
Oh, okay.
West Washington Street is done.
Yeah, that's true.
All the valves, and they did the little board on the whiteboard where they're talking about the tie-ins of all the different valves and stuff they were replacing down there. That's all the work that they were doing.
Is that what this is here?
That is what that is.
So that wasn't included in grant ninety-one, one eighty-one?
Well, it's, it, it could be, it could be, it just, you know, it's, it comes out of the contingency portion. So all the money that we got for that project that was being administered by Hot Cap, most of that was grant money. And so part of the money, all the money that was for that project altogether, a percentage of it goes to contingencies.
The reason I ask is because those valves were an add-on, weren't they?
Well, they, I think they had replaced, I think they had replaced some too.
But I know they made them shut-off valves so they could shut parts of it off, so you don't have to shut the whole thing off.
Correct.
Was those add, an add-on to the contract?
Some were, yeah. They were, I believe it was recommended to do that while they had those pits open.
So, so the, the, the grant money covered that, those add-ons?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. The crowd's been a little.
Look at you. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
I think she went home.
She walked right to her car.
Yeah. I saw her car leave the parking lot.
Sort of like you, Donnie.
I know, yeah. See it?
It sounds like her voice is getting a little hoarse, too.
Yeah, it is. I think she has a cold.
Oh.
Yeah. And she did curse Bill then.
Um, we do have a, a small area matter. Should they weigh in?
On this one.
Yeah. It's nothing that requires motion.
You're not related to Coach McNett, are you?
I'm, I'm sure, yeah.
I told him you left.
Thank you.
Thank you. Did I start her car?
Okay, so. If you have any questions, please ask.
This is, this is the one. This is the same one you gave.
Oh, it's the one I just put in.
Oh, yeah, it's the dog park. Yes.
It's work that's already been done. Both exhibits are the same. Okay. Thank you for double checking.
I can email.
Okay. Now, I, I, I'm sure I'm not going to have any problems with it. I'm just nobody's rubber stamp, so. Like to set eyes on it.
That's the one we just said. For the dog park. I think, I think it's mislabeled maybe because that one is the same as the dog park. Here, I just forward this. That's, you know.
You know, oh, I just got it.
Yeah, I know, but this other one. There's something. See if the first.
Oh, okay. Dog parks all the way down.
I'm gonna see if this one, my computer's. Page one is definitely different. And, uh, there's a page two dog park again. So this is the only one, this is the, this is it. This is, yeah, the one page. Okay. So. This one.
Okay. All right.
So it doesn't break it down. So if you're looking for an itemization. Well, but if you're, if you're looking for an itemization for like valves or, you know, compared to, you know, in concrete to, like if you're looking for that, this isn't going to give it to you. Because that's what you're looking for.
Understood, yeah.
Is that what you were looking for or?
Yeah, something along the lines of what we usually receive for, um, for change orders and like what we receive for the, um, dog park, but, uh, you know.
Okay. So are we fine to call the roll?
Yes.
Okay. Clerk call the roll on this ordinance.
Mr. Command?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Joseph Saw?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Flowers?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
Or that's eighty-three, twenty-five passes. Resolution twenty-three sixty, if someone would like to introduce it.
We're about talking on that.
A resolution to dedicate the Shelter House Nelson Commons Park to Bill Wynn. Whereas the city of Nelsonville, Ohio acknowledges its deep appreciation for many contributions by Bill Wynn. Whereas Bill Wynn was a lifelong resident of Nelsonville, Ohio. His visions and contributions created significant strides in the building of his hometown community. Whereas Bill Wynn was the business owner and operator of Sanborn Bending, and his family values brought his earnest belief in loyalty to his hometown. Whereas Bill Wynn was instrumental in developing community projects, and he was deeply committed to the betterment of Nelsonville as demonstrated by his consistent philanthropic efforts. Whereas Bill Wynn devoted sixteen years of his life to Nelsonville Council, as a Nelsonville Council member, and worked tirelessly to ensure the positive and progressive growth of his hometown. Whereas Bill Wynn believed in his community and his people, and his allegiance was valued as a member of the Nelsonville Chamber of Commerce and the Nelsonville Rotary Club. Whereas Bill Wynn gave of himself as a coach and sponsor of softball Little League, preschool board member of the Nelsonville Presbyterian Church, and his core values were a wonderful guidance for all ages of the residents of Nelsonville. Whereas Bill Wynn lived a life of dedication and loyalty to his community as demonstrated by his belief in action in raising a family in his hometown. And his love not only fell through his capacity as father, husband, and grandfather, but also was a beacon of light to the community for his adoration for his loved ones. Now therefore be resolved by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio as follows. Nelsonville City Council offers its deepest gratitude to Bill Wynn for the immense impact his presence case upon the community. Yes, was. The Shelter House at Nelsonville, at Nelson Commons Park shall be forever dedicated to the name of Mr. Bill Wynn. Council finds this ordinance was adopted at a meeting open to the public as required by applicable law. This resolution shall be in full force and effect at the earliest time permitted by law, duly adopted by council on first reading, the twenty-fourth day of November, two thousand twenty-five.
Motion to adopt. So move. Second. Citizens' comments? Counsel discussion. Mr. Holmes?
I remember, uh, Bill Wynn, he was one of the first people I met when I came here. And, uh, what I remember, he sat right there before I came on the back of the. And, uh, he did a good job, and I personally appreciate remembering and, uh, I think it's a good thing he's here.
If I could say something, um, Bill and I graduated high school together. He was a good friend of mine, and, uh, I think his wife, Susan, who grew up just down the street from where I grew up, I think she would appreciate this and his whole family. His brother John Wynn, I knew very well, and he was a loyal, even though he lived in Chillicothe, well, Greenville, over by Chillicothe for, um, some years. He was a loyal Nelsonville supporter and a loyal person to Nelsonville. I see Nancy smiling back there, Bob. We all knew Bill, and, um, this is well deserved. And I just want to say, if Susan's watching, God bless you, and we think that, uh, we all agree that Bill Wynn deserves recognition in this town.
Thank you.
This is something that I had thought about for a while. And I contacted Bill's family, and they approved it.
Clerk call the roll.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Joseph Saw?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Flowers?
Yes.
Mr. Jack?
Yes.
Mr. Command?
Yes.
Resolution twenty-three sixty-one, if someone would like to introduce it. So introduce.
A resolution waiving competitive bidding for the construction and installment of playground equipment at Nelson Commons Park. Whereas ordinance eight, dash, twenty-four, specifies the circumstances under which competitive bidding shall be provided and the circumstances under which competitive bidding may be waived by council. Whereas Bluegrass Recreation Sales and Installation has submitted a project proposal for the construction and installation of playground equipment at Nelson Commons Park, which project proposal includes a discounted project price. Whereas the offer of the discounted price expires no later than December first, two thousand twenty-five. Whereas council finds Bluegrass Recreation Sales and Installation provide services for playground equipment and installation that are unique and uncommon and are qualified to construct and install the playground equipment. Whereas council finds it is in the best interest of the city to accept the discounted project price to construct and install the playground equipment. Whereas Bluegrass Recreation Sales and Installation has quoted the city a price of three hundred forty-nine thousand, seven hundred seventy-three dollars and seventy cents to perform such work at Nelson Commons Park. Now therefore be resolved by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio as follows. Council hereby exempt a contract for construction and installation of playground equipment at Nelson's Commons Park from the competitive, I'm sorry, from the competitive bidding requirements. City manager is directed and authorized to enter into an agreement with Bluegrass Recreation Sales and Installation for the construction and installation of playground equipment at Nelson Commons Park, provided the cost for the city shall not exceed three hundred forty-nine thousand, seven hundred seventy-three dollars, seventy cents. No money shall be expended on the project other than as appropriated or by law. Funds for the maintenance and restoration of the Nelsonville Fountain playground equipment shall be paid out of the Betty Johnson Fund and the Capital Improvement Fund. Council hereby finds that this resolution was adopted in a meeting open to the public as required by applicable law. This resolution shall be in full force and effect at the earliest time permitted by law, duly adopted by council on first reading the twenty-fourth day of November, two thousand twenty-five.
Motion to adopt. So move.
Second.
Do we need to, I'm in the language.
Instruction, installation, playground equipment at Nelson Commons Park, basically.
Uh, citizens' comments?
I've been concerned about this project ever since I first heard about it. Um, not that it wouldn't be nice, um, but I'm concerned about the funds available and where the funds are coming from. And two things, um, we're going to spend three hundred fifty thousand dollars on a small piece of ground outside of the pool. And the pool already needs repair, and I think it was quoted, that's about six hundred thousand. Um, and it was going to come from the Betty Johnson Fund. Um, I just think this, until we can just really get a good grasp on what our financial situation is, we already know the general fund is, uh, somewhat in trouble. I'm trying to analyze and do some work on it now. I think going out to the people when we talk of something like that, and then we're spending three hundred fifty thousand to put playground equipment up, it does not make sense, and it doesn't fly right in the view of the citizens. Some, yes, but, uh, there's an awful lot of them that would think that is not right. Uh, again, my main concern is the money.
And that's right, I feel the same way. The pool, playground, playground equipment and the pool, do we have the money for the pool to fix the pool that it'll be open in May of next year? We talk about it being broken, but I don't hear anybody talking about fixing it. We talk about it being broken, but I don't hear anybody talking about fixing it. Very important for our town and the children, playground equipment, thousands, hundreds of thousands of dollars, no. And I think citizens, I think if they really knew what this costs, they would say, no, we want the pool fixed. Very important. Have you talked about the pools? Why don't, why don't you guys answer? Have you talked about repairing the pool and having the money for it before we pay hundreds of thousands of dollars out for playground equipment?
So yes, um, this has been discussed numerous times by the Recreation Committee, uh, Mr. Holmes has addressed it. Could you answer some of those questions?
I, I kind of thought so. I would be happy to. Yeah, we're going to repair the pool, the pool was open just the same as it was this year. The pool will be opened every year. We take care of the pool, we do the pool maintenance, okay? That's why we spent money in the pool, that's why we're getting ready to put a new roof on the pool. So the pool would be taken care of. Matter of fact, I believe the pool has been taken care of, has it not opened every year? Wait, 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 do I have, do I have the floor or do I not have the floor? Okay, thank you. The pool has been open every year since it opened. I've been here since two thousand three, we've always opened the pool, okay? We've repaired the pool, we've made it necessary. We have talked about this in a Parks and Recreation Committee in an open session, okay? Casey Cox has done a wonderful job, we've got young people coming into town with small children. That park there, that playground is tired, it does not owe us any money. We have the money to pay for it. We do have the money to pay for it, that's why the Betty Johnson Fund was put there to begin with. So I have no reservations about this whatsoever. I think this is something that the community needs desperately. You know, we're, we're having new people move in with children, they have no place with good equipment, good playground equipment that's safe. That, that playground equipment over there needs to be taken out. So I stand fully behind it, I've been to the bank several times, we were going to borrow the money, we don't need to borrow the money, and, and that was the conversation that Nick Smith had. He said, Brett, why are we borrowing the money when we have it already? That will save us ninety thousand dollars. The reason we're doing the community build is that's going to save us several other hundreds of thousands. Because we've been involved in this, because we go out and we lead instead of follow, instead of always having money put aside, we have other organizations who are actually coming to Casey Cox and saying, hey, we want our name on it. We want our name there. So we're talking about the Moose, we're talking about Rocky Moose, we're talking about other organizations. We do have the money in place to take care of that, and that has not taken any money away from repairing the pool whatsoever. Any questions?
Uh, council discuss, or I'm sorry, citizens' comment.
I just have one comment on both, the pool is important, playground is important. Pool is open three months a year, playground is open twelve.
Well. I do want to stress that a large portion of the equipment in this plan is discounted at, what, fifty percent? Um. What was it? It was significant.
For some ninety thousand dollars that they offered.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, and that offer expires on December first, um, so in terms of when we're going to do, um, improvements, um, at Nelsonville, at Nelson Commons Park, if we do it later, it's going to cost more.
I still have. I, I want to address two things. Um. You address you always take care of the pool and the pool's always open. Are you aware that there's a big leak under there and we're spending more money for the water that we're leaking out of there?
Right.
Um. I don't know that I am quite objectionable as I am financially. And, um, my husband walks our dog three times a day. Well, he doesn't walk her, she walks him. And her, she's got tracks through town. And one of those ways, when she leaves our house, she goes up Washington and goes down the library alley to the pool alley. He could probably tell you more about that park than any citizen in town. And he can, he's walked it summer, spring, fall, and he will tell you that there's not that high of a usage of that park, and the biggest usage is from the hive.
So it sounds like the high usage from the park.
Pardon?
It's something, there is a high usage of the park, the kids at the hive are using it.
Yeah, they're, they're the only ones that appear to use it, and that's only a short period of time during the day. And we're going to spend a lot.
So you're saying?
I'm not saying it's wrong to do it, I'm saying the funds, and, and if he thinks he's got the funds to fix the pool, I don't know where it is, because that's what the Betty Johnson Fund was mentioned months ago before we ever opened it this year, that that's what they were going to try to use and fix, am I right?
Well, yeah, you're not right, you're not wrong, so, you know, it's, yeah.
I mean, weren't the Betty Johnson Funds kind of specified to?
First city, uh, beautification, that's, that's what the Betty Johnson Fund.
No, I wasn't talking about that, I meant, it was specifically you guys talked about.
There's been a lot of discussion about a lot of usage of the Betty Johnson Fund since we've, they've been part of the system.
Okay. My memory fails.
What I remember is Patrick Saffington, uh, when, when asked about the Betty Johnson Fund, he said he was going to put it in a specific area to be used to fix the pool.
It's still there.
Because I questioned him intently, that's when they said we were losing a million gallons of water a, a summer.
Yeah, the city auditor doesn't make that decision.
Well, I'm not saying who makes the decision, I'm just saying that he told me, right here in city council, that that six hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars was going to be used and put aside for pool maintenance. Uh, he told me that, you guys were sitting there.
I, I think there was an ordinance.
Well, there was, I'm pretty sure of that too, completely.
Mr. Holmes?
Mr. Babbington and I talked about the Betty Johnson Fund at length, and he explained to me that that money had been appropriated for beautification of the city, uh, which I said, okay, he said nothing about being specified for any specific account. That's why we took a hundred and twenty-nine thousand out of it to redo the pound. That's why, I mean, we can, if, if you want, if you feel more comfortable enough going and taking a loan, we certainly can do that, because we talked with, we talked with Eric Courtney from Farmers Bank about what's called a community reinvestment, you know, V A P. And the banks get points for that, and he did a twenty-year, no, I think a twenty-year payment, which we could easily do, but as always, the interest is upfront, it's loaded upfront. So I mean, I was all ready to do that, and we can, we can go, huh? Um, six or seven percent, seven percent, I think. You know? So I mean, we can, well, we can do it now, we couldn't run out of time, but, but Nick Smith and I went and we sat down with, with, um, with Eric Courtney, and we, and we discussed it, it was Mr. Smith's recommendation, probably against my, a little bit against my wishes, that we just go ahead and pay it out of the Betty Johnson Fund, because we could save the interest on it, so, um. You know, we can go either way, but I, I, I would strongly recommend that we do this, the community, the young people, you know, all the young people, the small children, they're the ones that need that playground. You know, Mr. Mr. Cox said something I thought was very interesting one day. He takes his children to Athens and Logan to the playground. I want people in Athens and Logan to bring their children to the Nelson Commons Playground. And it was designed that so it's going to be a nice, not just simply we just barely get by, but it's something that we needed and something we deserve and, and something that I think the community is going to get behind. You can't get behind the project that's just halfway done. If you want, if you expect, uh, private organizations to get behind something, you need to give them something nice. Our children deserve it, our communities deserve it, I think Nelsonville deserves it.
Mr. Flowers?
Uh, yeah, I have a question for Mr. Holmes. I sat into that, that, that meeting where Mr. Cox passed out the.
Right, right.
And what happened to the other two hundred thousand dollars? It was five hundred forty-nine thousand that he passed.
We're doing the community bill. By doing the community bill, we can save that much money. And the reason we're doing the community bill is that we've got, um, good name, um, Yuri Edwards has agreed to kind of spearhead that. We've got Hocking College, we've got Tri County Vocational, we've got a lot of young parents who are willing to get involved, voluntarily, to do the community bill. So by doing that, and there's a lot of work, site work that can be done that saves us that money. Now, you know, I mean, it would be easier just if they came and did it, but that would be another, throw another two hundred thousand dollars on. Um, Mr. Cox and I talked about it, at first I was against it because I thought, well, if they don't do a good job and somebody doesn't spearhead it, then city guys are going to end up doing it and it won't be done right. But on the other hand, it's a great opportunity to be, to build community camaraderie. Come together for one main purpose and support each other. So I think the people that I've talked to, uh, there's a lot of young people, Mr. Smith, Nick Smith has two little boys. Police chief has two little boys, you know? There's a lot of young people that's moving into our community with small children, this is just their turn, you know? So I fully support, answer any questions you have on it.
Do you have a plan or a goal or anything?
Oh, yeah, they've, they've been out there, they've been out there everywhere, they've been in multiple, uh, Parks and Rec committees.
Um, I have a question. From Mr. Powell. What other things do you know about maybe the pool or anything, because I didn't know about that. Um, and I think that it should be addressed, maybe not in this very moment, but it definitely needs to be addressed because somebody said, I know there's a lot of numbers and a lot of things, but.
It, it is being addressed, it's been being addressed, it's gotten better, been improving as they've been doing more and more troubleshooting. Mr. Cohen is, when I was on Parks and Rec, we had many discussions about it in committee.
Okay.
So it's been improving.
In May, will there be such a grandiose leak or will it be improved?
The, the pool, well, the pool shut off, but when, when they turn it back on, there's, there will probably continuously still be a leak until it's completely resolved. They haven't found all of the leaks, but I mean, it keeps getting better, and there's less and less loss every year.
Yeah, at the end of the season, they did report that there was less loss in the water this year.
Mr. Cohen's not here tonight, but I know that he's also talked about doing some work on the pool this fall before spring, so I would assume it'd be an improvement in springtime when they open the pool again.
Okay, sorry to derail it from playground, but I think it's important to address too, so.
Yeah, this, these aren't discussions that happen, and I know everybody feels that these, all these, uh, open discussions need to be held in regular council when that's really not the purpose of regular council meetings, it's the, uh, purpose of legislation. A lot of that, all the work gets done in committee meetings prior to coming to, um, the council.
And I said for a long time, committee meetings are the nuts and bolts of what we do, that's where the work's focused. But yet, very few citizens show up at committee meetings, and then we should be having those discussions. It's not until we do this, and then we do what we're doing right now.
Yeah, this is a worthwhile discussion, and then.
It is, but that's over and over in the committee meetings, and nobody attends them. So, any other council discussion?
Just to follow up on what Frank had just said, you can come to any meetings and you can submit comments, email about those.
Absolutely.
Like, there's multiple ways to interact with, um, city council and committees.
Yeah, because we're about to find out on this next resolution, my point. So if we're ready, let's call the vote, roll call on this resolution.
Mr. Joseph Saul?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Flowers?
No.
Mr. Jack?
Yes.
Mr. Coman?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Resolution twenty-three sixty-one passes. Resolution twenty-three sixty-two, if someone would like to introduce it. I'll introduce it.
The resolution instructing the city manager to put the city's trash contract out to bid, whereas the city's current trash franchise contract is set to expire in March twenty-twenty-six. Whereas Public Waste Management Services is a public service which the city must provide to its residents and businesses. Whereas it is in the city's best interest to immediately place the trash franchise contract out to bid, so that bids may be solicited, reviewed, and a new contract be approved and in place timely to ensure continuity, trash collection, and waste management services. Now therefore be resolved by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio's followers. City manager is hereby instructed to immediately place the city's trash collection franchise contract out to bid. This resolution shall not financially obligate the city of Nelsonville or be construed to as authorizing and entering, sorry, or be construed as authorizing entering a particular contract until such is approved by separate ordinance duly enacted by council. Council hereby finds and determines that all formal actions taken relative to the adoption of this resolution were taken in an open meeting of the Nelsonville City Council, and that all deliberations of council and other committees, if any, which resulted in formal action, were taken in meetings open to the public in full compliance with applicable legal requirements. This resolution shall be in full force and effect at the earliest moment permitted by law. Newly adopted by council on first reading the twenty-fourth day of November two thousand twenty-five.
Motion to adopt. Remove. Second, I'll settle. Uh, citizens' comments? Council discussion.
Uh, Mr. Robe, my understanding is that, uh, Mr. Holmes asked you about the cooperative agreement that was discussed at the last Police Commission meeting that was proposed by the representative from S O or S O R T. It was also brought up again, uh, today, and my understanding is that if we went with that, we wouldn't need to put out bids. Um, can you just give me like a?
The current contract, uh, includes the right for the city to opt to renew the contract rather than putting it out for bid. Um, so the city has that right, but just because the city has the right doesn't mean that it has to exercise the right, it still has to determine whether or not it wants to exercise the right, so. If, if that right is exercised, putting it out to bid is not necessary, um, but if there's not going to be an exercise of that right, then it would need to be put out to bid, um. The current contract term expires in March, if it's not put out to bid now, it's going to be very difficult to put out to bid, solicit bid, receive bids, award a new contract, and have it all done in place. Because remember, that can't be done if it's an emergency, because it's awarding a franchise, so you're talking two readings plus thirty days. Um, if it's not, if it's not done timely, there's a strong risk of lack of continuity trash collection anyways.
What, is there any consequences of just us continuing the current contract? I mean, I think people are pretty satisfied with their service.
Um. I think it's up the council's discretion about whether to exercise that right, I mean, there is the contractual right, I, I think the. I, I think the, if council's thinking that it's possible to get a better contract price by putting it out to bid again, that would be the rationale for putting it out to bid. Um, of course, money's not the only concern and it shouldn't be the only concern. Um, but that would be the rationale to put it out to bid. But if, if the city is, is satisfied with services of currently rendered and, you know, thinks that we might not be able to get a better price certainly in the long run and exercising the right to, um, extend, perhaps makes sense. But a- again, it's, it's council's decision about whether to exercise that right or not.
Um, I, I cannot imagine a scenario where like Rumpy's able to offer a better rate when they do the recycling through Athens Talking Recycling Center. Um, I don't know. I, I think we've not explored the cooperative agreement that was proposed enough. So I'm, I'm kind of feeling, no, I'm putting stuff to bid at this time. That's just how I'm feeling.
Okay, uh, any other council discussion?
I would concur with what he just said.
Okay. Um, I asked the committee earlier, we currently do a fee for the city to do the billing. Did the committee recommend a possible increase in that fee?
No.
Okay.
Sorry, I thought, I thought you did have like a figure in mind for that.
We never talked about a figure.
Okay.
So the services of the city's providing them, the portion of the contract will not be an increase? Everything else is increased?
Well, what we talked about, and I think you were sitting right here, we talked about sending this up to the council for bid. We just talked about a while ago.
And here we are. So, um, that's why we're looking at, I, I don't know currently what the deal is for the billing. Do you happen to know this, or?
Well, I know what I bet. It's five bucks.
That's, that's not what he's talking, he's, he's talking about the city currently is the one that writes the invoices and submits for, and builds. Yeah. Or not, not the overall, not the overall trash removal, just the admin part of it.
Yeah.
Well, I think we have an override on that money, the $35 for the admin part of it. It, I think it's a buck sixty or a buck something like that.
See, that's why, that's why I asked the committee when you met two weeks ago to have all that information, but we don't seem to have it right now.
Yet again.
I'm sorry?
No, nevermind.
Okay. Mr. Holmes? I think one of the people that you ought to check with before you make your decision of whether to put it out to bid is Mr. Taylor, Robert Taylor. He deals with a lot of the complaints, a lot of the issues that come in. He might be able to shed some light on whether or not you might think it's a good idea to put it out to bid or a bad idea. It's always, it's always good to have options.
I think part of the issue of, um, our office getting those complaints is that Athens Talking Recycling Center's number is not on our website.
Right.
Um, links about Athens Talking Center go to dead links on our website too. Um, so I don't think Athens Talking Center could possibly address complaints that they're not receiving. Um, so I think the city could do more to like direct people that way to discuss their issues with that entity. Um, do you have any idea of how many complaints are coming in about the service?
I'll be happy to get that one.
Okay. Uh, the citizens that I've talked to seem to be pretty happy with the service that we receive.
Might, you might just want to check on that.
Well, I mean, I remember when we had Rumpy, I remember, uh, we currently have Athens Talking Recycling Center now, um, and then we have improved service under Athens Talking Recycling Center.
So what am I, what am I hearing from the, uh, council?
We already have a motion and a second, so.
Correct.
Unless there's a overriding motion to table it.
Um, I motion to table it and further explore the cooperative agreement option before putting it out to bid. We would still have time if we put it out to bid in December before the March deadline, wouldn't we?
You barely have enough time.
It's, it's going to be kind of close. Um, I can say like, let's say publicly.
Okay.
Couldn't we table it and then after?
So there's a motion, there's a motion on the floor to table it.
Counsel can table it. I'm just saying, there's not much time to make this decision without causing...
Can we table it after executive session?
We could certainly do that. I mean, uh, something that's been tabled can always be taken up from the table up until the end of the next regular meeting.
Um, I motion table this until, I motion table this.
Second. Okay, so you're tabling it to the end of the meeting after executive?
Yes.
Call, call and roll on the, uh, motion, motion.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Flowers?
Yes.
Mr. Peck?
Yes.
Mr. Command?
Yes.
Mr. Joseph Saul?
Yes.
There may be some insights from the audience if any commentary is allowed.
We've, we've tabled it, um, at the end of the meeting. I'm, I'm not sure what else there could be at this point.
Well, I mean, I think...
Go ahead.
Just, this is...
Should we, if we're going to untable it after executive, can we discuss it at that point? Because we still have, we, we haven't had city manager, we still have a resolution, we have a city manager for a bit of the order and then our executive session.
This will take like thirty seconds.
Always, yeah. But this goes back...
It's only always...
This, this validates my point earlier about many... So we have tabled this motion, um, resolution 2363, if someone would like to introduce it.
I would like to introduce it.
You do not have it. Uh, Mr. Rob is going to read this resolution. Go ahead, Mr. Rob.
Resolution 2363.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, could, could we not talk right now? Because I would really like to hear this resolution.
Well, leave, how would that be?
Resolution 2363, a resolution recognizing the public service of Council Clerk Susan Harmony. Whereas Susan Harmony has faithfully served as council clerk for the city of Nelsonville over recent years, whereas Ms. Harmony will soon be departing service with the city after her years of faithful service. Whereas it is fitting and proper for the city to recognize Ms. Harmony's years of faithful service to the city. Now therefore be it resolved by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio as follows. The city hereby recognizes and declares its appreciation to Susan Harmony for her dedication to public service to the city of Nelsonville. The city manager shall cause a certified copy of this resolution to be delivered to Ms. Harmony. The city manager is hereby instructed to send the city's thanks to Ms. Harmony for her service to the city. City council hereby finds that this resolution was adopted in a meeting open to the public as required by applicable law. This resolution shall be in full force and effect at the earliest time permitted by law. Duly adopted by council on first reading on the 24th day of November 2025.
Motion to adopt. Remove. Second. Citizens' comments.
I, I, first of all, many people don't know, but Susan is the reason I first ever got on council, considered being on council. She was the one that, you know, convinced me to get involved. Um, and, uh, she's been, my wife and, and Susan used to work together long ago. And, uh, so we've been friends for many years and I just appreciate her friendship. I appreciate, um, you know, her actually getting me involved, even though I want to pull my hair out sometimes, I feel like it's been worthwhile for me over my years. And, uh, I just appreciate all that she's done for, you know, myself and my family and for the city. So I appreciate, uh, being part of a resolution to honor her, so thank you, Susan.
Absolutely. I totally agree. Um, thank you so much, Susan.
I would just like to say that, uh, I love Susan.
I love you too.
Call and roll, please.
Flowers?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Peck?
Yes.
Mr. Command?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Joseph Saul?
Yes.
Yes.
City managers report, Mr. Holmes. I gave it earlier. You don't need anything else from me. Okay, uh, good in the order, um, Mr. Taylor?
Well, I was going to say thank you to Susan before, uh, Jonathan blew that out of the water, so, uh, for her years of dedication. And, uh, also want to say, uh, congratulations to the Nelsonville, uh, North Buckeyes football season. They had a great season, uh, played a really tough team this last weekend and, uh, but I think those kids have a lot to be proud of and there's, um, there's, you know, uh, Mr. Odenthal, you know, number 75, that's going to be awesome to see his number in the, in the, you know, Rose Bowl parade. Uh, Will's actually going to be, uh, he's committed to Ohio University to play football there next year, so I'm really excited to watch him in, in green and white, so. Well, I have...
Mr. Joseph Saul?
I'd like to echo everything that Mr. Taylor just said. Um, also let people know that there will be a Nelsonville Friendsgiving, um, on Thursday the 27th from noon to 3:00 PM, um, with good food and good company. Tentative location is Nelsonville Homes, 900 East Canal Street, the community room. Um, and any changes will be announced via the What's Next Nelsonville Facebook page. Um, and on, um, a serious note, I do want to remind everybody that ordinance 5425 is the law of the land and will be until otherwise specified by the city order courts.
That's all I have. Um, I think I said this last, last could be order at the last meeting, but, uh, thank you to all the citizens that came out with a few of their input and stuck around after 10:00 PM. Um, it's always appreciated to see same faces and new faces, and the media are also sticking out too, so. Thank you to everyone else who's on, sit on conference, still manages to turn around to, you know, uh, I think we all want to get out of here.
Mr. Flowers?
Um, to follow up on what, uh, Mr. Joseph Saul said, I, um, I want to reiterate that I support the citizens of this community and I stand 100% behind them on their vote. That's all.
Mr. Peck?
Thank you, appreciate it, Ms. Harmony. That's all.
Okay. I'd like to read a statement. This is my last council meeting. So four years ago, I was elected to Nelsonville City Council. I took the oath of office to uphold the constitution and the charter of the city of Nelsonville. In doing so, I was representing 100% of the citizens, not 70% or 30%. Approximately two years ago, issue 23 was brought forward with the idea of going back to the mayor statutory form of government. I signed a petition supporting putting that issue on the ballot. It then became apparent there was no written comprehensive transition plan associated with issue 23. The voters passed the initiative to go back to the statutory form of government. And repeatedly, council asked for the transition plan, which was never produced. The council was told it was contained in the ORC. But even supporters of issue 23 over time have acknowledged there was no plan for transition. We heard statements such as, one does not exist. We heard, we will make mistakes, but we'll figure it out. And the ORC addresses all of the issues. There are other examples of the lack of planning for the transition. There will be those that will disagree and announce it strongly through social media and radio calling shows. But we have been a strong council with most of us working together to make Nelsonville better. We as a council have done our best in the worst of times achieving things such as the comprehensive plan update, the HR policy, the playground equipment for the Nelson Collins Park, numerous infrastructure upgrades, adjoining with the Athens County Economic Development Commission, initiating a program to upgrade the storm drain system, the completion of the dog park, DORA, addressing water violations, and many more ordinances and resolutions that have benefited the city. There were many people involved in the positives of the past four years, with their assistance never going unnoticed by myself, the citizens, or the state who's been watching. I'd like to personally thank, in no particular order, past city manager Scott Frank, current city manager Fred Holmes, Taylor Sappington, Chief Tolliver, Susan Harmony, Dan Pfeifer, Cory Taylor, Tony Duffy, Justin Booth, Doug Childs, Nancy Sonny, Nick Smith, Jason Cohen, Ofa Lawson, Cameron Peck, Nick Joseph Saul, McCray Powell, the dedicated city employees, Michael Betts from DLZ, the Ad hoc Commission, Michael Mullane, and with the utmost respect and gratitude, Mr. Rob. My eyes have been opened, drawn to personal attacks that have been untrue and uncalled forth. I'm not going to be able to finish this, but we got to get this triggered out. Bye-bye.
So with that, uh, if we can, uh, motion to go into executive session under RRC 121.22 for personnel and legal matters, just to discuss, to discuss the trash contract, uh, inviting in, uh, city manager and, uh, city law director.
Mr. Peck?
Yes.
Mr. Command?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Joseph Saul?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Flowers?
Yes.
Okay, I'll make a motion to remove resolution 2362 from the table.
Second.
Second.
Command?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Joseph Saul?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Flowers?
Yes.
Mr. Pack?
Yes.
Okay, uh, is there any further discussion on resolution twenty-three sixty-two?
I personally see relatively little harm in putting the trash contract out to bid. Making the most informed decision that we can possibly make. With that, I will say that I personally hope to find out that the, uh, that renewing the contract with Athens Talking, um, is the best option.
Any other council discussion?
I cannot foresee anyone offering us a better bid and better service than what our local unionized workplace that employs our own citizens is offering us currently. Um, maybe something magical happen and, and the bid, but, um, yeah, that's kind of how I expect that to go.
Anyone else? Clerk, call and roll.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Joseph Saul?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Flowers?
No.
Mr. Pack?
Yes.
Mr. Command?
Yes. Resolution twenty-three sixty-two passes. With that, I make a motion to adjourn. Second, third.
Mr. Joseph Saul?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Flowers?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Command?
Yes.
Yes.
I know, very nice of your line. Cute.